It's called on the Sparks City Council meeting of February 24th, 2014. A way call please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Ratty, absent. Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Kerrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City manager Carey, absent. City attorney Adams.
Here.
Thank you, we're the queen.
Okay, if they'll stand for the invitation from Town Hall Church and the Latter Day Saints, welcome sir. Uh-oh. Fire in the hole.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful this day to meet together in this city council meeting and we pray that thy Spirit will be our mayor and city councilman, that they will have a spirit of wisdom, a discernment, and be able to put aside personal agendas and do those things that are right and proper for this great city. We pray for those who present business before the council, that they will do so with the proper attitude and spirit and be able to accept decisions made. We ask a special blessing on our city employees, especially our police department and fire department, as they will be protected as they protect us. Father, we ask additionally that thou wilt relieve the drought in our area, that we will have the moisture to fill our streams and reservoirs, that the farmers and ranchers will have what they need, and that our city will be green and beautiful this coming year. We acknowledge thy hand in our life, Father, in all of our business doings, and pray that thou be with us now in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you sir for the kind words. If you remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Lawson would you please turn me in the pledge?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, next we have comments from the public. Anyone in the public like to speak on the topic of their choice? Okay, so now we'll move on to approval of the agenda. If we could please, will you make the motion to approve the agenda if we could take 6.5 and do it as the last item after 8.1? That's the appointment to city manager if we so decide to do that. Mr. Schmidt.
As a reminder, recommendations, I make a motion to approve the agenda as outlined, except for item 6.5 held after 8.1.
Second, Mr. Schmidt.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? So you now please vote. Passes unanimously. 3.1, consideration of past minutes of the regular Sparks City Council meeting for February 10th, 2014. Any amendments, corrections, deletions? If not, looking for motion, Mr. Smith.
Please do.
Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve the minutes of February 10th, 2014. Any further discussion? So you now please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, 4.1 is Nevada Moves Day. Is there someone here who will accept the proclamation for Nevada Moves Day? I agree.
You ready to get them?
I did.
Oh, they got them? Okay, get it.
You're on top of it.
Okay, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation and then we'll present it and then I'll give you a few minutes to say a few words. Whereas parents driving children to school cannot account for up to 25 percent of the moving rush hour traffic under the section of. Are we a little low?
I'm crying in your voice there.
Are we okay? All right. Whereas walking and bicycling to school reduces the number of vehicle trips in vicinity of schools and potential conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians or bicyclists. And whereas reducing the number of vehicles driving students to school results in increased safety, reduced traffic congestion, improved air quality, and less fuel consumption in the vicinity of schools. Whereas the benefits related to physical activity at an early age play a leading role in reducing rates of heart disease, diabetes, and other obesity-related health problems among children. And whereas children walking and bicycling to school together with parents and caregivers opens opportunities to mentor children about pedestrian and bicycle safety and its benefits related to health and the environment. And whereas children, parents, and community leaders around Nevada are joining together to walk and bicycle to school on Nevada Moves Day on March 19th, 2014. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, March 19th, 2014, as Nevada Moves Day in the City of Sparks, and encourage citizens to walk or bicycle their children to school while celebrating the benefits of increased safety and health this day and throughout the year. Thank you. Okay. Want to say a few words? All of you can say a few words. Sure.
Do you want to say something? And then I have a minute just to wrap up.
Okay.
Visual of Nevada Moves Day.
Just tell us your name and what you're doing here.
My name is Robbie Bullen and I go to Jerry Whitehead and my school will be participating in Nevada Moves Day.
Great.
My name is Joey Carvum and I am from Catherine Dunn Elementary and my school will be in Nevada Moves Day.
I am Barbie Carvum and I am from Catherine Dunn Elementary and my school will be participating in Nevada Moves Day.
Hand me your arm, Rocky.
Broke my collarbone.
Ah.
Were you walking to school?
It was outdoors though.
It was outdoors.
Good. Okay, now you have a video or?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Years ago, Safe House to School in here in Washoe County was inspired by the national campaign Let's Move. This year, we celebrate the fifth annual Nevada Moves Day. We began with just four schools and now we have 27 schools that will be participating. There are a variety of events, throwing pool jump hook, pool lift, dancing, egg toss, sack races. It's a wonderful event and studies show that when children adopt these healthy habits early in their lives, they're more likely to make them their lifetime practices. And this one-day event is just a reminder for the community to reminisce on the simple joy of being healthy. And that is it. And I thank you for your time and you putting this day aside for Sparks.
Well, thank you for being here and bringing the three young gentlemen. We appreciate it. Thank you so much. Okay, next is 4.2, presentation Farm Fresh for Kids, and I believe we have Mr. Karthik Rohatki, who's going to give us a presentation? Come on down, Karthik.
Mr. Mayor, if I might say a word?
Sure, go ahead.
About four months ago, I had the opportunity to visit Davidson Academy up at UNR and the least I can say is I was so impressed with the students there. I think the youngest one was in sixth grade and they were doing high school and college level work. So these kids are brilliant and Karthik has a business that he started and he wanted to do in presentation, so I'm looking forward to that. But if you do get the opportunity, it's a fenced-in area at UNR, so you have to go through the door that's locked, you can't get in from the outside. These kids are pretty well protected and it's very impressive. Karthik.
Thank you for the great introduction, Councilman Smith, and thank you for inviting me to speak here before the city council. Today, I'm going to talk a little bit about a nonprofit organization I've been working on for the past few years with several other Davidson Academy students, including Michael Bogart, Ryan Mann, Amin Humayun, and Sarah Tappner. I first got the idea for this nonprofit in August 2010, when I read an article in the New York Times about this Massachusetts nonprofit wholesome wave. This organization was giving out farmer's market vouchers and nutrition education to low-income families through medical clinics. At the time, it seemed like a great idea to me because every dollar that they were giving out to the families also benefited a small-scale farmer. It seemed like really great, efficient way to spend the money. So I dug a little further into this concept of farmer's market vouchers and I found this map that you see here. Thirty-six states around the country have WIC farmer's market nutrition programs where the state gives out these farmer's market vouchers to families already participating in the WIC program. Unfortunately, Nevada's not one of the 36 states. I thought this would be an excellent niche I could fill and be of service to these families. I kept doing research and I went to a nearby convenience store to see what kinds of access to fresh food families were having. This is what I found, aisles of chips, candies, sodas, and processed foods. The fruit and vegetable section was tucked off in a back corner and was pretty limited. I realized that all these families were having difficulty getting the fresh fruits and vegetables that they needed to form a healthy diet. Even the CDC backed me up here. Fruits and vegetables are great sources of many vitamins, minerals, and other natural substances that may help protect you from chronic diseases. I started thinking that maybe our several percentage points higher obesity rate in Nevada might be due to our limited access to fresh, healthy foods. At the same time, I saw how important it is to support local Nevada farmers, especially those that are using minimal level of chemicals. By supporting these farmers, we're helping the environment by taking out the pesticides and industrial chemicals and we're returning money to the local economy. After doing all this research, I laid down the mission of Farm Fresh for Kids in January 2011. Our mission is to help low-income, nutritionally at-risk children get started eating more fresh fruits and vegetables while promoting small-scale, sustainable farmers. The main way we accomplish our mission is through these farmer's market vouchers here. Each family receives five vouchers like these for a total of $25 of vouchers. We give the vouchers out to clinics, including HAWK, Community Health Alliance WIC clinics, Wells Avenue Clinic, and the Nevada Early Intervention Services. The families can then take their vouchers to the farmer's market where they can spend them just like cash for fresh fruits, vegetables, or herbs at one of our participating vendors. We then pay the farmers at the end of the season for whatever they've taken in, thereby helping both the families and the farmers. We give out our aid based on income, dietary need, and the age of the children. We realize the importance of cementing in good, healthy habits from an early age. In addition to our vouchers, we want to make sure that the families are getting the proper dietary advice they need to effectively incorporate these fruits and vegetables. So we use the food color wheel approach and teach the kids that if they eat some fruits and vegetables from each of the different color wheels, then they should be getting most of the vitamins and minerals they need. We also utilize the recently released USDA MyPlate and we try to tell the kids how to make half your plate fruits and vegetables. We also want them to have some fun too, though, so we give out these kids activities where kids can draw in the vegetables they've eaten and color in anything that may be on the list. It encourages kids to have fun while still learning about the importance of proper nutrition. As you can see, the kids aren't the only ones who seem to be happy with this program. It looks like the adults are very grateful for the opportunity as well. Here's a note we received from one of our first-grade recipients at the Sierra Vista Elementary School. That's all I have for today. I want to take the time, I want to thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I have a website here if you want any more information or you can scan the QR code if you have a smartphone. I'll be happy to answer any questions or comments you may have now.
Carl, yeah, we do have some questions. Thank you for coming today, I appreciate it. There's one up here that could take a little lesson from eating better, but I'm glad you're bringing it to the light for children to do so too, so. Questions, Mr. Schmidt.
Carl, you talked about the $5 vouchers. How do you get the money to pay for those?
That's one of the hardest parts. We try to get some money. The Great Basin Food Co-op has been a pretty generous sponsor and we do a few events like the seedling sale and a few events through the Davidson Institute and Davidson Academy, but that's one of the things that we're hoping to work on in the future is getting more sponsors from the community.
Carl, if somebody wanted to donate to your cause, how do they do that? Do you have a phone number or?
The best way would probably be to go to farmfreshforkids.org and there's a donate button on the top left there and you can make an online donation there.
Thank you.
Mr. Lawson.
I was wondering, how many kids do you serve now?
Do you mean per year?
Yes.
It's hard to tell because not all of the vouchers we give out get used, but I think last year it was in the neighborhood of 50 to 75. That's something we're working on increasing as we're, we've been introducing the program to Sparks, Carson City, and other towns.
Well done.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Yeah, Carl, thank you so much for coming today and sharing with us the Farm Fresh for Kids. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, next is 4.3, special events report with you, fiscal year 13 preview of 14. Ms. Burge, how are you?
I'm good. I don't need to touch anything.
Anyone help?
Thought it was open.
Yeah, I thought it was as well. Oh, there it goes.
Oh, there it is.
There it goes.
Good afternoon, city council. This is Francine Burge, for the record, special events supervisor. I'm going to go through a really quick recap of our fiscal year 2013 special event season, which means it goes from July to June. It's kind of difficult for me as a person coming into this because it ends right in the middle of my event season, so if it looks kind of strange, I'll show you some of the places where we overlap. So just to review, our event objectives are to promote tourism, to stimulate economic impact, and also encourage civic pride. We have these objectives based on the strategic plan that was just put in place by the Parks and Recreation Department. As you can see, we have a great variety of events that happen all year long that hit all of these objectives. Last year, we had 41 events, 77 event days, and over 700,000 people in attendance. This is only for downtown and the Marina. This does not include any of the events that happen out at Golden Eagle. So we had 11 new events and so I will go through some of these new events, not all of them, but a few of them. We had two new run events, which were themed, kind of fun runs. One was the Shamrock Shuffle and the other one was the Rabbit Room, which was a fundraiser for the Sparks Rotary. We had two really cool family events. One was called Cops and Burgers and the other one is Touching Trucks. Both are fundraisers for both the Special Olympics and the Washoe County School District. The Western Heritage Festival came back. It happened a long time ago, but it came back in May this year. It was very successful. They're coming back in October of this year to be a part of the NV150 celebration, so it'll be all about the sesquicentennial. And we had the MyWake Challenge, which technically was in fiscal year 14, but I wanted to bring it up because we actually had a world record broken at the Sparks Marina. We had a wakeboarding for 24 hours. And I saw him when he got off, he didn't look so hot. Again, another event that happened really technically in 14, but Frightmare came downtown and over 12,000 people visited Frightmare, so that brought 12,000 people into our downtown area in a shoulder month outside of the event season, so that was kind of exciting. And of course, we end with our hometown parade. We had a 10% increase in participation this year. Unfortunately, we had a lot of no-shows because of the snow, but we did have an increased number of sponsorships and we did have, I think, a good attendance despite the cold. We were also an official NV150 event. So some internal successes that we've had this year. When I started, we put together with the whole special events team, we put together a special event application and now this application has gone completely online. It's kind of streamless and it also helps streamline and it also helps me get it to all the departments very easily so we can make sure that it can get approved in a streamlined fashion. It was once 30 pages, it's now down to six. The manual was produced last year and it was basically for the event producers that are coming in and putting on events. That way, we were able to give better idea of costs for events. When we're bringing in the new producers, it kind of helps them plan their events a little bit better so that we can tell them what their costs would be, what the policies are, and what the process is all about. This year, we took it a step further and we created an internal special events manual that was done with all the departments and that way, we could improve a lot of the consistencies with and communication. This year was the first year that we're reworking the Tormark Committee application, kind of using that to kind of be more consistent with the city's plans and the objectives when it comes to events, and so we're going to see how that goes after this year's funding cycle. And Adam and I and the BLT have had some very successful fan tours. We brought in a lot of producers. We've had some new producers coming in through those and Adam has worked on some really successful campaigns to help with the branding that supports the special events. Now to the money. The goal of special events at this point is to get to 100% cost recovery. As you can see, the bars are getting closer together, which is what we're trying, what we're aiming for. If you want to see more of the percentages, we're right at about 75% cost recovery and looking forward into fiscal year 14, we're at about 93% cost recovery, so we're really doing well. So coming soon, a couple of new events that are coming to downtown. One is Pets on the Plaza, which is modeled after Pet Palooza, which is a big event that's happened down in Las Vegas. Parade costumes, you know, the Splash Dogs will be there. Great event, lots of people have dogs. It's a great event for downtown. Food Truck Downtown, we're working with a food truck vendor that's coming to Victorian Square, bringing about 15 trucks every other Saturday night between May and October, so about 13 new event days. And last but not least, did you know that the word Sparks in German is Funken? Funkenfest is coming September 14 and it's supposed to be a great traditional German brew festival and we're very excited about it.
I don't want to slip over those words.
And before I get to the last, thank you. I just wanted to thank our special events team, which some of them are here, and Dan Hamlin in Community Services, Chad Hawkins in Police, Cliff Humphries in Environmental Control, Ron Corman, Facilities, Chris McCubbins, Fire Department, and Joe Rodriguez in Code Enforcement. If any of those guys are here, I'd like to thank them. And I will take any questions.
Questions, you want to, Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Francine, thank you for the recap on things. I noticed that the financial report was a little light, so I'll ask some questions on that.
Okay.
75% overall, we recouped all of our costs. When we're talking about cost, we're just talking about the cost of the event? Are we talking about employees' salaries such as yourself, office space, back room, services, and everything that are needed for that, to do that?
That is 100% city labor. We don't charge for venues or we don't charge for rentals, but that is all city labor. The difference between, for example, this year was, let me see here, wrote that down, about 85,000 in events. If you take Christmas out, it's about 50,000 that we're losing on events.
Okay, so basically, your salary then is covered through the events?
No, I believe my salary is covered from the general fund.
Good afternoon, council, Mayor Martini, Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director. It is covering the direct costs only.
And that's my question. This is the issue that I've had with accounting with special events for the 12, 13 years I've been on the city council is that you would fail every accounting test that you do when it comes to this, of trying to come back and recap of what your costs are and what your expenses are. And that's where I think we need to give, report to the council that how much do we invest and what do we get back out of that, you know, because we've got, you know, the salaries for the employees to do special events, not each individual event, but as a group, how many people are working on trying to do, bring special events in the city and then, you know, your rent space, everything that we wouldn't do. If we were out of that business altogether, what would we not be paying for? And then include all those costs in this, we see where the 75% actually falls into. You know, it's been an ongoing dispute for a long time. And I guess the question is, with 75%, which events make us money that pay in excess, you know, or do no events pay 100% of their cost back? The way we're calculating, the way you're calculating today, which events are costing us the most amount of money and which events are making money?
All of the events, when the event is over, we go into the accounting system and whatever costs are in the system, whether in its most, it is all payroll, whatever that cost is billed directly to the producer. That's why we're working towards having 100% cost recovery so that it doesn't cost us money. I think that you are right, we're not charging for venues where we could be making a profit, but at this point, my direction has been to, has been, that has been given to me, is just to cover whatever costs the city, so it's just, we're not making money.
Yeah, well, I think it was covering our costs. We're not, we're not calculating everything as what our costs are of doing business.
Right.
That's where the terminology gets changed around. So, right now, we say every event that we do, we bill out 100% of our services and they're paid back 100%.
Correct.
So what is that 25% difference, cost recovery, that we don't get?
Well, one is the Christmas parade. The Christmas parade does not recover 100% of its costs and that is the only event that we're producing.
That's the biggest margin right there is the hometown Christmas parade. It has never recovered its own costs.
We're losing 50,000 a year on that? Is that what you're?
No, that margin's getting smaller. There's, there are some events that might get charged a little extra based on the accounting records that we have to rely on, and so it's just a matter of cleaning up the internal process and making sure we're getting 100% recovery.
Thank you. My last comment, Councilman Smith and I, we sat in the first round of tourism marketing and there's no doubt that the BLT team and the special events team, you know, is making a difference on out there.
Well, one is the Christmas Parade. The Christmas Parade does not recover 100% of its costs, and that is the only event that we're producing.
That's the biggest margin right there is the Hometown Christmas Parade. It has never recovered its own costs.
We're losing $50,000 a year on that? Is that what you're...
No, that margin's getting smaller. There are some events that might get charged a little extra based on the accounting records that we have to rely on, and so it's just a matter of cleaning up the internal process and making sure we're getting 100% recovery.
Thank you. My last comment, Councilman Smith and I, we sat in the first round of tourism marketing, and there's no doubt that the BLT team and the Special Events team, you know, is making a difference on out there. So my hat's off to you guys. We have some other events that are coming up that's not on your board yet, that you haven't spoke to about, I know because we don't have contracts and things for it, but there's some other good stuff coming on. So thank you to staff, and thank you to Adam and the BLT team for all the work that you guys have done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Francine. Tracy, thanks for creating some more events. That's what's key here, I think, what's important. A lot of times, we talk about expenses and what it's costing us here, and what it costs there, but really, we can't, we don't take into consideration because it's very difficult, how much sales tax we get, how much room tax we get, how many more dollars we get because of these events. So it's really difficult to put everything together to find out if you're making a lot of money, losing a lot of money. There's so many moving parts, but I think we're still very well-known for our community events, and I hope we keep on making more and more all the time. So thank you, guys, for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you also for your support. Where we are in the current fiscal year, Francine did mention, we're at about approximately 92, 93% cost recovery, which is the best ever, so we hope to maintain that momentum these last few months of the fiscal year. With some of the biggest events already behind us, we're getting real close, so...
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate the report. Okay, let's move on to General Business, 6.1, Discussion and Possible Direction on City of Sparks Ballot Questions for the 2014 General Election. Mr. Mayberry?
Oh, God. Wait a minute. Hold on. I blew it. Let's move to Consent Items, 5.1. Anybody want to pull the consent item? If you're looking for motion on 5.1, Mr. Schmidt?
Motion to approve item 5.1. Is that one of my staff?
It's ready. It's been moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilwoman Randy to approve 5.1. 5.1 approved discussion. So unanimously. Passed unanimously. Now, 6.1, Discussion and Possible Direction of City of Sparks Ballot Questions for 2014 General Election. Mr. Mayberry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Adam Mayberry, for the record, you're Community Relations Manager. So item 6.1 is an opportunity for this body to discuss any possible ballot questions that you might want to see placed on the general election ballot in November. There's a process for this. The questions have to be submitted to the registrar of voters by July 21, and then there's questions, there's arguments for and against that need to be submitted by August 8. So there's a process involved, and we wanted just to have this discussion now, see if there are any concepts that might be on your minds, and we could come back at a later date and kind of formulate and seek approval if that's necessary. Again, it's not required to have a question on the ballot. Just by a little background, in 2006, the city had a question along with the City of Reno and Washoe County addressing the public safety sales tax issue, if you recall that. And then in 2010, Sparks had a similar question that was just specific to Sparks as well. But those were the only ballot questions that were on the general election cycle in recent memory, so that was my remarks.
Good. Questions. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Adam, do we have any idea what Reno and Washoe County are talking about as far as local governments putting ballots?
I do not, Councilman Schmidt. I do not believe they have started that discussion yet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Carrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, speak up. Last month, the police chief and I went to a homeowners meeting in my ward, and I threw this out to the crowd. I think there's probably 30 people there, and I said if anybody would like me to support putting the extra pennies we have in our property tax on the ballot to support hiring more police officers, I would do that as long as somebody came up and sent me an email, and what kind of response I got. A lot of the 30 people there, I think I got 10 responses that said, "Go ahead and do it." So I would like to take a look at that. Sean, how many cents do we have? Four cents or is it two?
I think it's right around four cents.
So four cents, and how many, how much would that get us, just average, per year?
It's about $700,000.
So that's about seven new police officers that we could support. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So from my point of view, I'll do what a constituency asked me to do, and I'd like to throw that out there for perhaps a ballot. Now, I just want everybody to know, we could do that on our own on the city council. In other words, we don't have to go out and ask anybody, but I would really like to take our marching orders from the voters and give it a shot.
Okay. Thank you.
The thing of doing it out of our own is we can raise that tax.
We can, we've always been, had the opportunity to do that, and we've not done that.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Adam, I'd like to follow up on the charter committee's issue that they're dealing with in regards to municipal courts and the justice court, possibility of combining those two courts.
I'm understanding that there's a lot of situations, a lot of history on back there. The direction that I would like to have on this as we're going through this, I would like to have a report back before we make a decision with this, and it's got to be done for the charter committee anyway, is how did this animal get created? No, because I'm understanding now that it's created by NRS, and that's in direct conflict with the Constitution. Somewhere between 1905 and 1978, this animal was created, and so there has to be a mechanism of how the courts were created, and if it's something done by NRS, we need to know that ahead of time, that that's state legislator business. But, you know, it just means if the question gets rephrased a little bit, or the issue go in front of the Assembly or Senator that's going to handle the charter committee bill. So I'd like to really have a history of how the municipal court was created, you know? That seems to be, and with that, how was it paid for? You know, what tax dollars got shifted when the creation of the court, to make this court no longer that the county had to pay for, that the city was paying for?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Schmidt?
I have a question for Mr. Schmidt. Are you talking about consolidating the courts into one building or just into one court?
Yeah, it'd be going back to the original Constitution. Where the judicial court handled all of those types of things within that judicial boundaries. The municipal courts are an option that's laid out in the state constitution, and in approximately 1978, somehow, the City of Sparks exercises option. And I'm being told now that that was not an option that we exercised. That was a state legislator put in the bill that required municipalities to have a municipal court. Since that time, some of the municipalities have gone back and said, "No, we're not going to do this. We want to have a joint municipal judicial court," to go back to the Constitution. And if I can make that any more cloudier, that's what I'm hearing these days, it seems to me that there's enough moving parts on out there to this thing to get a straight answer of what you can do and what you can't do is limited at this time. So I'm looking at how to go ahead and get back to the Constitution of the state and require the taxing bodies to pay for the services that the Constitution requires for. Thank you.
Mr. Lawson?
I want to go back to Mr. Carrigan's comment and point out that he won't be here after November, so...
Well, you want to vote on the four cents right now?
No, no. I actually think that's a great idea, and I would love to put it on the ballot to let the citizens choose if they want to tax themselves for that or not.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I was going to bring that up. I was just going to ask the rest of the council, is there any appetite for that before, you know, Adam goes out and does any kind of research or needs to do that?
Thank you.
So there's one person that had an appetite for it. Julia?
Ms. Ray? Well, my appetite would be different, and it's the same appetite that I've had for the last five years for $700,000. You'd spend $700,000 on a campaign if you were really going to pass an initiative, particularly on a year that's going to already be, have the margin tax and several other well-funded, highly advertised initiatives. So my concern would be putting it on the ballot in practical terms really isn't giving it any chance to survive. So I think if we need the $700,000 for police, which we know we do, that we should do exactly what the City of Reno did, and just go ahead and approve the tax. That's my personal view.
So you just want to cut to the chase?
Let's just get it done.
Anyone else? Okay, Adam, you...
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay with what you got? Understand?
Thank you all.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to 6.2, Discussion and Possible Direction to Initiate Amendments to Titles 5 and 9 to Allow for Business Licensing of Medical Marijuana Establishments Operating Within the City of Sparks in Compliance with Nevada's Senate Bill 374 and the United State of Nevada's forthcoming Regulations for Medical Marijuana Establishments. Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Steve Driscoll, Assistant City Manager, for the record. This is a companion item to action that you took in your last meeting that was dealing with zoning ordinance, zoning ordinance. This would be for business license in Title 5, and then in Title 9, if there was a decision through the different options to do city-driven background checks for any of the establishments, that would then have us do Title 9. So what this is, is just seeking permission to do the research and bring back to you for your consideration the changes and potential options that we would have in order to license the four types of facilities that are contemplated by SB 374, which are grow facilities, manufacturing facilities, dispensaries, and testing. And so this just gives your staff the authority to go do that work.
Steve, a quick explanation maybe for the audience. Title 5 and Title 9, what are those specifically?
Title 5 is your business license title in the Sparks Municipal Code, and Title 9 deals with policing action, which background checks, criminal background checks, would fall under that title.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Driscoll. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, is there either one of these 5 or 9 deal with taxation issues?
In Title 5, our current business license ordinances define the fees that are associated with a business license, everything from an upfront fee to fees based on annual business. It also covers the cost to recover inspection costs and what inspections are there. So it is contemplated that we would bring back to the council options in the business license realm that would then have revenues coming to the city as a licensed facility.
And as of right now, we have no state guidelines on taxation issues. How is this taxed?
The state is contemplating through their actions that as product moves from the grow facility to the dispensary, or from the grow facility to the production, then to the dispensary, that each one of those transactions will have a sales tax component on them for which we would get our piece based on our current allocations. One of the things that's being contemplated by other jurisdictions, especially in the South, is that there would be a fairly significant upfront application fee, and that there would then be a percentage-driven fee on a quarterly to annual basis on the amount of monetary transaction that would go through. Because when the inventory moves from the grow facility to the dispensary, for instance, the state law requires very strict inventory control, so it will determine the type of product, and therefore, there will be a cost associated with it, and the volume of product, so it'll be easy to track from a financial perspective, inventory movement. We, if we were to follow what Las Vegas and Clark County are thinking, that our business license would attach a fee to the movement of that inventory.
My understanding that there's only could be so many of these in the City of Sparks, all done on a formula, and as I'm hearing, two growers and two distributors or something like that is a maximum that could be done in the City of Sparks?
No, sir. The number of two is the current allocation of dispensaries. Washoe County will get 10 total, and the two incorporated cities cannot have more than 25%, so they can get up to two. The state, the county will then have six additional, and they will determine how they're going to allocate those, whether they will stay in the incorporated county, or they would go possibly to the two, one of the two cities or both. There is no limitation in the law on grow facilities, testing facilities, or production facilities where they would extract the oils that can be used for medicines and food. So at this point, those, the growing manufacturing piece, they can go wherever they want, wherever it makes sense for them as a business, but the dispensaries do have a limitation.
So with that in mind, if there was any other type of business coming into the city that we would say, let's say grocery stores, that you could only have two grocery stores in the entire city, would that not be considered a franchise agreement?
That is part of the research that your staff will do with your action today, if you approve this, is that we will look at the different types of business activities and determine what makes the most sense. Franchise has been discussed. Part of the question becomes, since it's definitely limited by law, at least at this point, it is an option, or at least it's a potential option for your future consideration. Knowing that that number can change with our request to the county, the county could grant, that may not provide itself a good way to do franchise, but it's certainly an option that we will consider as your staff. We will bring it to you for your consideration and your thought.
Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Lawson?
Steve, I wanted to clarify too. All we're talking about today is making room. We're not, we don't know what we're going to do. We don't have any clue what the state's going to find, you know? They haven't come to their final decisions on how they're going to do it. All we're just doing is opening the ability for us to move forward at some point in time in the future.
Mr. Lawson, Steve Driscoll, again for the record. Your rules of operations dictate that your staff is not to go work on ordinance changes and things without your permission. So all we're dealing today is seeking permission to do the research that's necessary to come back and provide you with information for the future on these topics. You, last meeting, you gave permission to your planning staff to look at zoning and land management issues. I'm coming to you today, because I missed the last deadline, to do the same thing on the business licensing side, because it needs to be worked, because it's not, medical marijuana is not contemplated anywhere in your current business license ordinance. So this is just doing the research to come back to you, to let you make choices.
I think that needs to be very clear, that this doesn't mean that Sparks is going to do anything, or we've set any numbers, or we've set anything. So I was also found it is this law continues to evolve, and I didn't know this until last week, that we could have any number of grow facilities in the City of Sparks, that there's not a limit of two. It's just on the dispensaries only.
Yes, sir. As I just mentioned a moment ago, the dispensaries have a finite number. The number can flex with approval of the county, but the county cannot have more than 10 total. There is no limitation on grow facilities, so there is no limitation on production facilities, and there's no limitation on testing facilities. We could have from zero to all of them.
Good. Thank you. Ms. Ray?
So there's been quite a bit of conversation about that limitation number, and it was relatively new information to me as well, that it was just the dispensaries. But the other thing that I heard this weekend, and I'm not sure if it's true, that I'd like to be part of the research, is my understanding is that the constraint for the number of the licenses is applied by the state, not by the city. And so the way it was explained to me is we could approve 10 dispensaries if 10 applicants come in, and they meet the minimum standards, and they meet the zoning, and they meet the qualifications, we could approve 10. But then they have to go to the state, and they have to get one of the licenses that's available, and it's the state that's allowed to rank them based on certain categories of strength, if you will. Is that your understanding?
Yes and no. That seems to be still fluid. In the law, it contemplates that the state will create a merit-based evaluation system for the purposes of determining who could be licensed. There is still a moving target on exactly what our role is. At one point, it was our understanding, we were thinking that the new regulation was going to go to where the state would create a minimum and say that these people are qualified per the regulations, and then the city could take that, and again, through a merit-based evaluation system, use that as a minimum, and then add any controls or restrictions that we had on top... or restrictions that we had on top of it. That seems to be changing from the standpoint that the state's merit system will take into effect what we're contemplating, and that if we had, let's say, our two dispensers, dispensaries, that they may be as restrictive as saying, here's your two. That's not been finalized. We are trying to have input that says, give us whatever number you have that meet the requirements, which one of the requirements would be to have a location identified in the city of Sparks for the state to certify them, or to allow them to be licensed, and then allow us to then do additional restrictions or control mechanisms, and then whittle that down to the two that we would have for ourselves. So that's still in motion. More decisions have to be made. It appears that the state is very concentrated in their effort to have their regulations done by the April 1st contemplated deadline from the bill. It doesn't mean that we have to be done. It just means that our piece of it has to be being worked on and moving forward.
So I remain concerned, and would like you to include this as part of, part of the research that you do as you're contemplating this, I remain concerned that we don't have a mechanism for picking winners or losers in this. First come, first served doesn't necessarily make sense if everybody applies on the same day, and I just want to be absolutely certain that there's either no appearance or reality of favoritism in terms of the distribution of this gold rush that is now medical marijuana happening in our state. And so if it's, if it is up to us, then I'd like to know what freedom do we have to consider all the applications at once? And if it isn't up to us, then it seems to me like everybody who qualifies needs to move forward to the state, who does have, the law does contemplate a merit-based system. But that's something I'm still looking for answers to.
Yes, ma'am. That's part of the research that we're, will be doing here, because the zoning piece of it may be the easiest part. The licensing will be the more complex part, because we have to be in a true interaction with what the state regs will do. The fact that they're moving is not helping us, but we will be bringing back our understanding of the flow and the rules and what our options are. So if we do have an option to be a second level of limitations, rules or regulations that would be part of an application process, that we would want to have that very specifically defined, so that people could file an application, it would be another level of merit-based, that you score enough points, and so the top two scores then get it versus, you know, my best friend gets it kind of thing. So asked and answered, and we heard you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm ready to make a motion. Before that, Steve, I just wanted to say that, you know, since we're not paying a sale for sales tax in this state, you know, Reno and Washoe County, if we just happen to be the ones that, because right now, they're kind of in hiatus over there in what they want to do, they're going to reap the benefits of sales in the city of Sparks too. So I really want you guys to lean towards the business licensing part, as far as where the city of Sparks is going to make their money. And let's be honest about this, you know, I mean, it is voted on by the people, but if you want it in the city, one of the, the attractions for me is how much money we can make off of this, okay? I'm going to be honest about it. The more money we charge somebody, the less money we have to charge our citizens, so I'm all for that. So I kind of want to lean that direction.
You know, the sales tax component's not really up to us.
No, and we're just going to get, you know.
We only get about 12 percent of whatever's sold.
Right.
So we will be bringing back, you know, based on our thoughts, and then based on your confirmation, having what is logical from the licensing side, which is and does stay with us directly.
We have another question.
No, I'm just going to make a motion. You're awesome.
Go ahead, I'll second to it. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Carrigan.
Yeah, I move to direct the staff and city manager to prepare and bring forward for city council consideration amendments to Title V and IX to allow for the business license of a medical marijuana establishment operating in the city of Sparks.
Mr. Schmidt.
Well, second for discussion.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve for 6.2 is outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Ms. Ratty.
Steve, you talked about this moving target with the state, and this has been my issue with this whole thing from the very beginning, is that I think we're out ahead of the curb, and we don't know what the curve is yet, and it's a dangerous place to be at. What is our drop dead date? When do we have to have something done here?
For the grow facilities, which have a four-month or so growth cycle from the time that they're approved and can plant till that they actually would harvest, that's about a four-month period of time. So the focus on the grow facilities and what can be done there certainly has a little more precedence. The dispensaries would not be able to be in full mode. There is a way for them to get from current home growers that exist today, some limited amount. Our goal is to be back in front of you with everything prior to June 1st. We will bring it in as quickly as we can for your consideration, because we may have to go back and rework some things. That seems to be consistent with the state's contemplation of how we're going to do. The South, the four main jurisdictions in the South have contemplated possibly not having their rules and regulations in place until September. They're getting pushed back from different members of the legislature to do that. I do know that Washoe County is looking to have their zoning piece in front of their planning commission and/or council in the near term. Clark County will be daylighting their ordinance this week for their next meeting for just the zoning component as well, and Las Vegas is on their tails with that. I know that Las Vegas's business license folks who we are in contact with have been working diligently on their business license component. There's, ahead of us from that standpoint, that they are looking at dispensaries being similar to their taverns, which they do now, which will be the ones that can have alcohol, gambling, alcohol, food, small dance hall types. They have a fairly substantial upfront that they do, and that is a little different than some of the bars that we have licensed here. So they are out in front of that, they're sharing that information, so we'll use that as some of our research for you.
Yeah, I appreciate the information. I didn't know it'd take four months to grow marijuana. That's, that's good information to have, but it's unfortunately, is irrelevant to the subject, because what I'm hearing is, we don't have a drop dead date from the state. There's nothing that says on October 1st, you know, you need to be ready to go. Is that, is that right?
They were using, Mr. Schmidt, Steve Driscoll for the record, they were using the April 1st statutory deadline from SB 374. The work that's being done for the, the rules and regulations are trying to have their information available as close to that date as they can. At this point, they're not dictating what we have to do. The law does contemplate that if a city does nothing, that the state would potentially have the right to try to impose something to the city. The fact that we are working diligently on it, and that we will be, that we're in front of you now, and that we'll be back in front of you for your thoughts, would allow us to progress at a schedule that is comfortable for the council, while still meeting the requirements from the state.
I think Mrs. Ratty's comment about favoritism, you know, we need to make sure that that is very, very well addressed here, because I think, you know, in many ways, that horse is already out of the barn. I've never seen an ordinance or title change or anything in my 13 years of the city council move at this speed. This is moving, I mean, this is, we're seeing it now all the time. I mean, we're, you know, it's, it's moving very, very rapidly, and when, when I see other cities in the state saying moratorium, we're not doing this, we're waiting for the state to come on out, and the city of Sparks is full steam ahead on this thing, because we have somebody out there that wants to do this. I mean, it's been, public staff has sat there and said, we got somebody who's got a facility that they want to get going, and so this needs to be done right away. The opportunity for favoritism is already out, as far as I'm concerned, done. I mean, it's, it's public knowledge. I don't know who somebody is, but we, but it's public knowledge, somebody wants to do something. And so I think we need to, you know, go ahead and get the ordinance and stuff ready to go, but we need to pay attention to the state's, you know, what the state's doing. You know, the worst thing I think we could do is get on out there and license a grower. Four months later, we got a crop, and we don't have dispensaries and everything else ready to go, because that's in the regulation process, and that could take who knows how long to go ahead and be done. So I'm, I'm in favor of getting things ready, but slowing this horse down until everybody can go ahead and take and get, get, get the state to get their stuff done, so we're not doing things two and three times.
Steve, we can't, we can't license anybody until the state's done with their regulations. Is that not correct?
No, sir, we cannot. And one of the reasons, thank you, Mr. Schmidt, for the question, Steve Driscoll again for the record. One of the reasons that the team is moving forward was some previous conversations from the council, and part of it was to try to be up and understand the state regs and see what was there, to see what controls they were going to have in place versus what controls we would need to have in place, so that we can then have ourselves in a position to determine what we're going to do, where we're going to do it, how we're going to do it, what the rules will be, so that the favoritism will not be there. The fact that we've had now two, and we're getting ready for our third approach from private outsiders to get a feeling for what we're doing, a lot of that is based on, there will be a limited number of, of grow facilities to start with. Your staff, under the direction of the manager, based on your direction, was to get a feeling for what's required from our standpoint to where, that if it makes sense for the city of Sparks to have grow facility inside its jurisdiction, that we do it right, we do it correctly, it has the proper control mechanisms on it, and it has the proper revenue opportunities on it as well, and that we don't find ourselves to where, that we can be held up, to where we're, you know, we're pushing, because we're not pushing, the speed isn't about a particular individual. The speed is trying to be as close to whatever the state's doing as we can, and recognizing what control mechanisms would be necessary for us to do it correctly.
Mr. Lawson.
Well, I'm, for discussion, I'm going to take the different tack. I think it absolutely has to be favoritism. We only get two dispensaries. I don't want a half, pardon my thoughts there. I don't, I don't want someone who's not a good businessman running a dispensary that has the potential to fail. I want the qualifications to be high, and absolutely it has to be favoritism, not based on who you are, but what your business acumen is, what your financial backing, I mean, there's a lot to this that, to me, makes a huge amount of sense. There's only two. We have the potential, maybe it gets more from the, from the county, but we only get two. That's, that's a big thing to me. So it needs to be someone who knows what they're doing. And so absolutely, there needs to be favoritism.
I don't really think that's favoritism, Ed.
Well, it's a higher standard.
Higher standard, I agree 100 percent, but I don't necessarily think that's favoritism.
Okay.
I mean, if you're, if we have standards, and you're up here, and I'm down here, then you get it. I mean, I don't think that's favoritism. I really don't.
Well, I don't want that to be construed as favoritism, as it is, we're looking for a high business acumen from these two individuals or corporations or whatever they are.
Whomever they might be.
Exactly.
Mr. Carrigan.
Yeah, I want to go on the record to say, and I don't care that there's two people or three people that want to do this, I just want to be ahead of the curve. I think it's smart for this city to get out there in front, and I don't care that there's somebody out there that wants to do this. They're not pushing me at all. I can tell you that right now. What's pushing me is the idea that we get our foot in the door, and then when the state says go, we are the first ones that are ready to go, because that's the way business, I mean, you know, when you're, if you run a city like a business, that's how business does it. You know, if there's a need, we're going to fill it. And you can't fill it if you sit back and wait. So I don't care, I just want to go on the record and say, and it doesn't matter to me if there's somebody out there ready to pounce, and once, and like Ed said, we only supposedly get two dispensaries, but the grow facilities may be more than that. Okay? So I just want to be ready to go, and I think it's in our favor to do it quickly.
Yeah, I think we're going to vet these people pretty religiously, and we'll know what's going on, so.
Mr. Mayor, Steve Driscoll again for the record. We've been very clear in the discussions that we've had so far, that we're not in the position to make any decisions on who will or won't. We're working on what will it take to do it, and then hopefully be able to use that as the way to, to have the highest possible standard and controls in place to do it, and it'll be satisfied that are those that meet the qualifications.
Ms. Ratty.
Yep, I, to clarify, I do think there's a difference between merit and a merit-based evaluation that's rational and all parties have to go through, and favoritism, which is, somebody gets special treatment. So I'm not, I mean, if, if the city has the ability to apply a merit-based evaluation, that'd be fantastic. My big question is, just to make sure that we're clear, I don't think there's anything in the state law, and I'm not sure how they could get there from regs, that gives the cities the legal ability to have a merit-based evaluation. That's not my understanding of how it's intended to work. Now, that said, that's the research that's going to be done.
Yes, ma'am.
My sense of urgency comes from perhaps a different place than some of the other council members. I don't care if we're first to the door. I really, I think we need to make sure that we do it right. But my sense of urgency comes from two places. One is, it's incredibly complex, and because of our rules, staff can't start working on it until we tell you to go start working on it. I want you to go start working on it, so that you have plenty of time, because of some of the pressure for getting, getting there quickly, to make sure that we're doing it right. So that's why I advocate moving forward today, is to give staff the time to work on it. The second sense of urgency for me is that I do know, I've had several constituents who've talked to me about being a person who has a prescription for medical marijuana and has no access. And I do think that after so many years have gone by, where people who have a legitimate need and get great comfort and don't have access to buy it, that there's some sense of urgency for me that comes from being able to solve that problem in the same manner that the legislature intended to solve it. So I think our message here is get started. How we end is a different question. We certainly still have lots of opportunities to ask questions and make our own rules.
I never end if we don't want to.
But let's get going.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Ms. Ratty.
Just a very basic, simple question. Do we have the right to say no? To growers, to distributors, to this being done in our city?
I wish I had legal opinion and access to that to tell you, but I can know that from the conversations that I've had at this point, it appears that there could be an option for the city to not allow grow or production, or even testing. However, it appears from conversations that have been on the record relating to the dispensaries, that that may be a point where, if the state felt that there was a need within a geographical area, that they may try to exercise the ability to do that. And so those are the things that we're hoping, as we do our research, that we're much more clear on, as to what is it that we're mandated by state law to do? What options do we have? Can we, and are we part of an approval process or not? Those are the things that we need to do, and your action today will determine whether or not we can start that process.
Will we, at any point in this process, the question be asked to the council, do you want to do this?
That is the contemplation of where we'll be driving the research. As the project manager of the city team, and that goes forward, it will be something that I will have on my to-do list, to be able to ask that question for you when we bring it back.
Because I think that's very, very important for this, this council to weigh in on, to have what's, you know, our motto's always been a family-friendly city, you know, and to, we just got special events, we're trying to get people here for special events, especially family-oriented events. I think that's a basic question that needs to be answered, if you can bring that to the council, and the council needs to weigh in, is that the direction they want to go with this? And that's, that's my whole issue here, is that I don't think we've ever been asked the question, do you want to go through this process or not? Is this something you want to do for the future of your city? So.
Mr. Schmidt, Steve Driscoll again for the record, will put that on our, on our project to-do list.
Mr. Schmidt.
I almost forgot, I didn't think it was me next. It's my understanding that, and I know people that have the prescriptions for medical marijuana, and they can't fill them here in Nevada, and they can't go to California to fill them, even though they were issued usually by a California doctor. They have to get the marijuana from here.
The, our understanding of the regs, how they're progressing, is that the inventory that will be part of what is sold in the dispensaries will have to originate in the state of Nevada. The question is, at the beginning, how does that happen? You currently have, in our county, even in our city, you have people that have medical marijuana cards, and it is my understanding that they have the legal right to grow, and they are doing so today. There is also product that you can get through pharmacy in pill form that is happening today in our city.
I don't think that's true. I don't think you can get the, the oils or anything.
Not that, I didn't say the oils. There's actually, there are pills that have a couple of the secondary compounds that you can do. So the question will be on startup, how do you get to inventory? So the question will be on startup, how do you get to inventory from a grow facility that's legal at whatever level, to a dispensary that's legal at whatever level? And then there will be a production piece to it that will then do the oils that can be used to infuse different products, including food. That's part of what we need to understand and what's there. The rules and regulations will tell us how that's going to move and work forward, at least in the beginning.
It's kind of the chicken and the egg with the dispensary and the, and the grow facility, I think, yep? Because the way I understand it now is, if you have a dispensary, you have to be getting it from your own grow, growing facility? Or the growers have to have a way to get rid of their, their product?
Yeah, there's, Mr. Schmidt, there's no, at least in the law currently, there is no direct tie between a dispensary and any grower. What it does say is that the dispensary can only receive product from a legally grown Nevada supplier. And so that'll be there. Now, whether or not a grower is going to do production, or whether a grower is going to do dispensary, that's certainly where, way down the road from what we're contemplating with your permission today.
Well, just, just for the record, I am completely against the legalization of marijuana, but that ship's already sailed, and I will vote to pursue staff, to have staff pursue setting up the dispensaries and everything.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. Does everyone remember the motion?
Was there a motion?
State law may get passed before this gets passed.
I think we have a motion by Mr. Carrigan and a second by Mr. Schmidt to approve the agenda item. Any further discussion? Please vote. Pass unanimously. Thanks, Steve.
Where are we at here? 6.3 considers possible approval of an additional cost for Nevada Energy Agreement for Adjustment of Utility Facilities between the City of Sparks and Nevada Energy. Prater Way Phase Three.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you this evening is a request to approve the additional costs that were incurred with the NV Energy Agreement and the construction of the Prater Way Streetscape Project. This was a portion of an NDOT project and removing the existing utility poles. NV Energy's portion of the project was undergrounding all of their energy facilities, along with, you had AT&amp;T, MCI, or one of the others. In doing so, there are two different contracts here. One was, our agreement with NV Energy required a construction portion that was bid through them, as well as a labor portion that was done by NV Energy crews. During the course of that, our initial agreement that we brought to you and was approved by council in 2011, those costs were approximately $454,000 and some change. Since that time, construction didn't really occur until late 2012. There are several reasons with that, a lot of them with right-of-way and final acquiring of easements. Once construction got started, this is one of our older parts of town, there were change orders that were incurred during that. Upon completion of the project, NV Energy submitted a bill. Since that time, your staff at Sparks, as well as NV Energy, we met several times to go through those bills and really chew on them and figure out what we felt truly was a responsibility of the City of Sparks and our citizens, and what was a responsibility of NV Energy or the other partners, where the utilities are part of that project. In the end, we're looking at $196,238.73 that is over and above the original contract. I'd be more than happy to answer any of your questions regarding this project.
Questions? Mr. Carrigan.
Chris, you'd have to refresh my memory, but who, who wanted to underground the utilities?
This started back, I believe, all the way original was in 2005. It was a betterment project with NDOT. We were looking at creating partnerships of how to get this area and get the power poles out of there. So it was actually between council and staff, looking in a way, it improves our ADA through that area. We've done major portions of Prater in here. Originally, we were doing it with CDBG funds. If you note, by the, the veterinary animal hospital, those previous ones in the auto area, we did exactly that. We did the streetscape improvements. This was a continuation of them, but we were looking for another way to fund them. So a portion of the improvements were reimbursed through NDOT. That portion of the project was done through RTNC. So there were reimbursements that were due back with that.
Okay, do the math for me then. The low bid was $299, and that was what we were responsible for as a city, correct?
Initially, yes.
Right, and that was, I'm not even worried about it being over the original estimate.
Correct.
But that was the portion that, that the city was going to pay?
Yes.
Okay, the second part of the bid, it says NV Energy's cost to install the new wiring was $240,000.
Correct, sir.
And that's, that's their bill?
Yes.
Then how did our bill get to $650,000?
Your original contracted construction, when they actually bid the project, it came in at $299,000, ended up 85 over what the estimate was.
Okay, I don't care about that.
Okay.
$299 is the bottom line.
Sure.
So $54,000 of that, you get $354,000.
Correct.
Where the other $300,000 come from?
So you have $54,000 in change orders with A-K and K, who did that construction project, brings their total bill up to $354,000 at the end of the day. NV Energy had a separate portion. A-K was just put in the condo.
Right.
NV had to come in and pull it. So their original labor that they estimated in 2011 was going to be $240,000.
Right.
At the end of it, it actually ended up at about 108. When we sat down with them, we went through it, we looked at what truly the city was responsible for. From when you originally approved that agreement to the time of construction, they did have a labor contract with their wiremen. It increased their labor by 7%. We did go back and look at transportation costs. Those increased by 14% during that period. We did look at that, and we pulled it ourselves and staff. With that being said, you also had some minor overhead out of their office, which is about 2.3. That ends up being an additional $56,000 to their labor. So their total cost ends up at 296.
Okay.
So if I add up, I mean, if you take the $454 that was the original, that was approved at council, the...
And that's being split between NV Energy and the city?
No. The $454 you originally approved in August.
Okay, so in other words, the $240,000 that was NV Energy's, wasn't NV Energy's, it was the city's.
No, it was the city's.
So it's all on our back?
Yes.
The entire bill is on our back. So what you're asking for is it went from $454 up to $656,000. So you're asking us to change, or approve change orders of about 100 and something thousand? Is that what you're saying?
Exactly, $196,000, almost 200.
And the reason for that is because labor costs changed?
No, just a portion of it. $56,000 were attributed to labor and transportation and a minor bit of overhead. The majority of the cost is actually in the construction part with A&amp;K. Those costs were 85,000 over the original estimate, and then you also had an additional $54,000 in change orders. So right there, you're 120.
So what if we vote no? I always like to ask this question, because it's all done. What if we vote no? That we don't want to approve the change order? Will we go now to court?
Most likely. I would have to refer to attorney.
True.
They'd have the right to their contract damages, would be suit and contract, and then also under the franchise agreement.
So we're, I mean, to me, it's almost like, why are you bringing this to us? It's kind of like, you know, we're going to do it anyway.
This is one of the more difficult ones we've ever ran into, and as well as NV Energy. We've never, in our case when we built Golden Eagle, we had a similar agreement. Costs came in on what they were estimated. We never had the long lap and lag between when we brought this to you as staff or NV Energy.
Yeah, because it's like, you know, we're talking three years.
Absolutely. And this has been going on since 2005. This is one of the more difficult projects. With that being said, through the meetings with NV Energy, when we were trying to put this together to bring to you, we've looked at errors in it. One of which is, from now on, if agreements are brought and there's a lag of more than six months, staff will be meeting back with NV Energy. Have there been changes to your contract? Is there an updated estimate? Do we need to bring that back forward to you as a council to be aware of that? Same goes with when contracts, when they actually, because it's through their bid process, not ours, if there's a difference in the estimated cost and what is actually comes out of a bid, bring those back. As well as look at monthly billings, when it's dealing with their labor and not ours, look at more of a, instead of a true-up at the end, hey, provide us monthly billing so we truly know through the course of the project where the actual cost of that labor stands.
Okay, and so where are we going to get this money if we vote yes?
Currently, it will come from your Fund 1401, your transportation fund, where you have gas tax and franchise fees. It will come out of the slurry seal program that was set to kick off.
So it was in $196,000 in slurry seal for next year?
For this fiscal year, currently.
For this fiscal year, yeah, okay.
That, and unfortunately, that was out in the Wingfield Springs area.
Yeah, I may have to, I knew we were going to get around to that. Okay.
Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Mayor, so basically, according to the spreadsheet that I'm looking at, you had change orders of $54,000 from the contracted construction, and I'm assuming that that's you're talking about NV Energy's contract construction.
The contractor that was hired to their bid, yes, A&amp;K Earth Movers.
And then NV Energy in-house, they had $56,000 additional cost inside in-house to go ahead and do their, to do the project. So you have a total of about $110,000 in, in changes in the actual job, which equates to about 25, almost 30% of the actual job. And then, so there's another 100,000 someplace that's not on this spreadsheet. Where's that other 100,000 going to?
You have $85,000, if you look at that spreadsheet, your actual bid came in at 85,441.
So we never got, staff never came, got approval for that 85,000 or change order, is what it is?
We never brought to you forth the actual bid.
It's just, I mean, the, the day that the bid happened, you guys knew you were 85,000 in the hole, and nobody came to the council to talk about that.
And I'll take the heat for that, because obviously, we didn't bring it before you.
My concern here, Chris, is this is phase three of this project, is it not?
Yes, sir.
We've done, we've done two already, phase three. Per lane mile or lane foot or pipe foot, what, what compares to the two here? How did we miss a bid so bad, when we've done it twice already? We missed a bid by 33% out the gate.
Unfortunately, these numbers, when they were done, if you're looking at back in 2011, also, this is a bid, the previous favors did not include undergrounding electrical. This was one of the more difficult sections of it. It was part of a stewardship program. It was a joint program between us, NV Energy, the state of Nevada, AT&amp;T, and all these others. Their estimate was off. And your original estimate for construction was 214, you got a bid that was 299. It's off. I can't give you an exact reason why in July of 2012 it was that far off.
No one thought at the time that, hey, we ought to talk about this thing?
No, sir. You know, I can't explain any reason to you.
I don't know of any agency that works for the government, especially in construction, that says that if something goes 33% off, you go find the money before, and technically, you violate the state law. Because state law says, before you write any contracts, you got to have the money in the bank to pay for it. And this wasn't dedicated, this 85,000. So you got, you got a violation of state law from the very beginning with this thing. So I, I'm kind of in agreements with Mr. Carrigan, what if we don't, don't pay it? But then again, who's, you know, we're going to spend a couple hundred thousand in legal fees to do it. NV Energy's has been a good partner in the, in the past for it. I'm just perplexed how, I guess the answer is, you put all these people together and it's going to cost you 30% more to get the same job done. You know, if you ask partners for the state and the city and NV Energy and where else, it's going to cost you more money to get done. I don't see we have any choice but not to do the slurry seal in Wingfield Springs, but...
Ms. Ready.
So I'm, I guess my question is really in the spirit of trying to figure out, how do we make sure something like this doesn't happen again in the future? How do we improve? And so it sounds like you've already gone, sat down with your partners and figured out, how could we do this differently? And I appreciate that. I'm just curious what caused the lag in time? Why, because it sounds to me like most of the problem was, we looked, we looked at this in 2012 and we didn't build it in, or 2011 and didn't build it till much later? Why, why did it take so long?
Several lags in time. Actually, this whole thing started, and I believe it was about 2005. Initial phases were presented to the state all along the north side as far as a project for, looking for some way else to build this, because the city didn't have the money all to do everything. With that being said, in 2005, we started entertaining with the state. In 2006, we actually submitted to the state, part of a stewardship program, where we get a portion of monies back. That was actually approved in August of 2006, and it was allocated federal funds for fiscal year 08, 09. Now, from that, then we had cooperative agreements that had to be done with NDOT. So that started in March of 2009, and was completed with NDOT. So then you're going through the design, design and review phase with NDOT, at the same time, working with our utility partners in NV Energy, AT&amp;T, and all those that were on the pole, and getting them to start their design process, and what they will need to do to come off of the pole and into the street. Unfortunately, going through that process, when you add, as you said, this many different partners, it becomes difficult getting through the review process. NDOT, there were about nine reviews, if I recall right, in red lines. When we brought the agreement to you in August of 2011, we felt that at that time, the right-of-way and the easements were about wrapped up. Unfortunately, they were not. We still had a couple holdups. That was one of our biggest issues that remained from when you approved this NV Energy Agreement. We still had an outstanding property. Apparently, that was a bank-owned property. So getting through who the bank was, mailing that, and so forth. Additionally, NDOT was still finalizing the civil site plan construction, and NV Energy was finalizing their bid package for that. But the major holdup at the end was the right-of-way and the easements.
Okay. Would you say that the erratic nature of construction bidding over that five-year period affected it, I mean, due to what's been going on in the recession?
It's very hard, it's volatile, and you just don't know at what time and when. Right now, we do expect bids to come in under what we've estimated them. We've just experienced that with North Truckee Drain. The other ones on buildings, we've experienced a lot higher than what we expected, the amphitheater that we were here last meeting with you. So it's, it's been a changing atmosphere.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, I'm prepared to make a motion if there's no other questions.
Okay.
To approve the additional cost for the NV Energy Agreement for the Adjustment Utility Facilities between the City of, City and Nevada Energy, amount of $196,238.73.
Second, Ms. Ready?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilwoman Ready to approve. Questions? Mr. Carrigan?
No, no, a question, I'm going to vote no on this, only, not because we don't owe Nevada Energy the money, but it's coming out of my ward's payment fund, and I think it should be split up. And this is a good example of what happens if you go ward-only when you're with people instead of citywide. Just thought I'd bring that up.
Mr. Lawson.
I think this is also a good example of term limits, and that this project started five years before I even got on the council, and it takes two years to figure out what the heck you're doing up here, and so some inherent flaws in all of this. And I'm, my unfortunate prediction for the future is that Sparks will do a better job, but there could be other municipalities that use this to their advantage.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For, Mr. Carrigan, if I wouldn't mind adjusting my motion that the, we approved $196,000, but the funding for it comes back to the council in a breakdown. We're going to find the money to pay the bill, but just come back and where, where we're going to take it out of which project. So that way there, you know, I agree with Mr. Carrigan, I don't, you know, road ceiling is, pays its benefits. We've heard that story over and over again. You take 200,000 out of road, road pavement, it's probably going to cost you a million next year. So we'll find 196,000, pay it, just come back to the council with a balanced approach on where we're going to take this money out of.
For the record, the, the funding that has been outlined in your staff report is where the original funding for the portions of the city that we did the agreement with were 1401. That is your only source of funding, other than in Fund 1404, that you could use that use that as general funds. Fund fourteen oh one is your franchise fees and your gas taxes, pay for your roadway and those types of projects. Your other funds within the CIP wouldn't meet that criteria to use. So it would be a direction to look in Fund fourteen oh four, which is limited this year in its source of funding. With the projects you've approved, this was the one source of funding in fourteen oh one. So we could take it from fourteen oh one. You can look at an end-of-year balance, where that fund ends up at the end of year. If there's sufficient funding that hasn't been used throughout that fund, then that would be able to be entertained, working with John Erickson and his staff, if they could get that slurry seal program out in what was planned. That will depend on what the end of year ends up at.
So I couldn't make, just saying that motion, we take this two hundred thousand out of general funds right now, and then that's where the money's paid for, and then you come back if you want to move from a private fund, you know, over...
Let's have John first. Go ahead, John.
For the record, John Martini, city engineer. Councilman Schmidt, I've heard what you've had to say. Whether you approve this or disapprove it, I'm assuming it'll be approved. If it is, we will report back to you on what source of funds we use to pay this and the effects going forward in the CIP.
You okay with that?
Mr. Carrigan?
No.
Here's all I want. If it's gonna come out of fourteen oh one, we can't spread that around to all the wards?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll vote for that if you do that. Just don't take it all out of Ward Four, that's all I ask.
Twenty percent out of all.
Yeah, yeah, only out of all. Depends on whose ox is getting gored now.
We will identify options.
So wait a minute, do we wanna withdraw the motion, Mr. Schmidt, and have a new motion?
No, I just go ahead and just add a amendment if it's okay with a second, that we get a report back on where it's all gonna come from.
Is that all right with a second, or?
Yeah, I wanted to commend my fellow council members on their creativity in tying ward-only, ward-only voting and term limits to a basic contract item. But yes, I am, I am okay with that. And with the spirit that we're gonna try to figure out how to disperse the pain across the entire city, but I think we need to move forward with this funding source the way it's outlined in the staff report. And then we'll figure out through our city manager and his team how to make sure that one, one area of town is not taking the worst of the impact.
Mr. Schmidt?
That's all I want. I want all of us to feel it.
Now, I'll support this. I just wanted to point out, for the last five years or so, we've had every engineer's estimates come back below. All the regular bids come below that, and we've taken that money and spread it out everywhere else. So we've been using the money wisely, and my prediction for the future is those bids will probably start going up now. So I think we've done well with the money we've had, and, you know, we didn't complain because the bids came in lower.
Can everyone understand the motion? Okay, seeing no further discussion, please vote.
Passed unanimously. And one thing, Chris, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. I'm assuming this may be your last meeting?
Oh, you get to see me tomorrow as well.
Oh, tomorrow, well, I mean, council meeting.
I'll be here until April first.
Okay, well, anyway, Mr. Cobb is going to be leaving the city. He's going over to the dark side and work for the county.
School district.
School district, I'm sorry. Even darker side now. But anyway, thanks for all you've brought to us in the city of Sparks. Many, many great projects that you've worked through, and we appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, six point four is the first reading?
A general ordinance resoning real property owned by Brock Property Investors LLC from I Industrial to TC Toys Commercial for five parcels totaling approximately 5.027 acres in size located at 1795, 1817, 1819, 1845, and 1865 Glendale Avenue, Sparks, Nevada, and providing other matters properly related to. And this is bill number 2667.
This is the first reading of bill number 2667. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, March 10, 2014. Now, we'll move on to eight point one, which is a public hearing, second reading, discussion, and possible action on CA 1-14, bill number 2666, and ordinance amending Title 20.43 of the Sparks Municipal Code, Providing Standards for the Erection of Any New School. Mr. Rundle?
Mr. Mayor, Jim Rundle, senior planner, here to present this item. And due to the length of the council meeting to this point, I've narrowed it down to about a forty-five minute presentation.
Well, I can guarantee if it's forty-five minutes, you're gonna be doing it to an empty council.
Back in the 2013 state legislature, the legislature approved a bill signed by Governor Sandoval requiring the city of Reno, city of Sparks, and Washoe County to, unincorporated Washoe County, I'll say because it's the zoning standards for the county, to amend their zoning ordinances to create essentially the same zoning ordinances when it comes to schools. These, the standards that are in front of you today would govern the construction of a school and have the same standards that are set forth in Reno, again, Washoe County, and the city of Sparks. These standards, Sparks is proposing to put these in our design standards manual. It would affect parking, landscaping, and the type of entitlement that the school district would have to go through, or a school would have to go through, excuse me. We had a little bit of discussion about it when the council sponsored staff to work on this amendment, and it is back in front of you today. It's gone in front of the planning commission, and they have forwarded a recommendation of approval. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions for Mr. Rundle? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular agenda item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring her back to council for action or questions. Anyone who needs questions? Okay, if not, looking for a motion. Ms. Ready?
I move to adopt bill number 2666, amending Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code, Providing Standards for the Erection of Any New School or the Alteration of Any Existing School and Other Matters Properly Relating There To Pursuant to Nevada Assembly Bill 87.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Ready, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve this particular agenda item. Any further discussion? Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out for the record that this assembly bill is just for Washoe County.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir, any, any counties with a population of...
Yeah, over one hundred thousand, less than seven hundred thousand, which makes it just Washoe County.
Yes.
Could've just said that, huh?
Yeah.
Mr. Lawson?
But I also want you to... We worked very hard with Assemblyman Daley to change this around to where it was more workable. So it, this is a pretty good compromise in my mind.
Yeah, well, when you have to compromise, it was, but that's what I'm saying. I didn't see any reason...
The Assemblymen did have...
Yeah, well, we're the only county that had to do that, so I just wanted to point that out.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Jim, appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to, let's move back to agenda item six point five. Federation Discussion, Possible Action on a Mayor's Appointment of the City Manager with the City Council Confirmation, Including Presentations and Interviews of Qualified Candidates. Ms. Severson?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Chris Severson, Employee and Customer Relations Manager. You have before you an agenda item, I think much anticipated, to select or make your recommendation for a new city manager. We opened the position on January 27th, closed it on February 3rd, and you have before you the applications and resumes of the two candidates who would need to qualify for this position. With that, per the mayor's recommendation, we were going to cut cards to see which candidate presented first, and I'm available for any questions.
Questions for Chris? Did you bring some cards?
She lives in Nevada.
I shuffled them. But I can shuffle them again.
How'd you shuffle them again?
This is the first in my thirty-plus years as a human resources professional. I did shuffle them face down. I did remove the jokers, just, just in case.
Chris, let me get this, this straight. The mayor appoint, makes it a... You know, his recommendation, and we either say yes or no?
Yes, per charter.
Now, why, what are we, what are we doing now?
Interviewing the candidates.
The candidates were each asked to prepare an opening statement under five minutes.
But that mayor's already made up his mind who he's gonna go forward, right? No, you have it.
Then the candidates can answer questions put to them by the mayor or council. Each candidate then will close with a statement, and then the mayor will make his recommendation.
Okay.
Is at least my understanding.
I didn't expect to expose myself like somebody else did once. Okay, go ahead, come on up and cut the cards, boys, or pick a card. High card goes first?
Oh, high card goes first.
Okay.
Aces are high.
Ace, an ace is high.
This is Nevada.
Ace is high.
Mr. Krutz will present first.
Okay. Thank you. So, you know, since this has to be a public, something that has to be done, the appointment has to be done in the public, I know that all the candidates have talked with the prospective council people, I believe, but I thought it was necessary that we keep this as transparent as possible, and if there was any other questions that anyone had that they could ask at this time, plus give the candidates a chance to make a quick presentation and about their qualification for the job. So that's why we're here.
So you need presentations?
Presentations, then you'll ask questions of each one?
Both presentations?
Presentation questions, presentation questions, and then there'll be a wrap-up for each one.
Thank you.
And additional questions if you want.
Mr. Mayor, is it fair to have the other candidate in the room at the same time?
Well, it's a public process, Mr. Smith, and there's no, no choice. Has to be done in the public, so each candidate will be here when the other one does their presentation. So try to keep it to five minutes or so, Mr. Krutz, if possible. I know your, your qualifications would last longer than that, but...
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and members of the council. For the record, I am Neil Krutz, and I am here to express my interest in being your next city manager. It's something that, a goal that I have had as part of my career for about the last eleven years or so, came to me, you know, within a couple of years of having come to work for the city of Sparks. Quick run-through of my qualifications. I have received a Master of Business Administration, Master of Science and Civil Engineering, and Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering, all from UNR. I am a Nevada Blue kid. I have twenty-three-plus years of professional experience, with seventeen of that being here at the city of Sparks. I am by nature analytical, big-picture oriented. For those of you who speak emergent edics, that makes me blue-yellow. I thrive on variety. That was one of the things I learned early in my engineering career, was doing the same kind of design over and over and over again turned into a form of torture for me. And that is one of the things I enjoy the most about this, the position that I hold currently and the positions that I've held in working for the city over the last seventeen years. I do work well with previously assembled teams. I have taken that on organizationally a couple of times in my career here. First in 2001, when promoted to Deputy Director of Community Development, and we moved essentially all the building permit and entitlement folks down to City Works. I was in charge of assembling that team. And then again, in late 2010, when we were making another round of cuts, came through the SSSI, created the Community Services Department. Sean tapped me to lead that department and take community development, public works, the parks maintenance folks out of the Parks and Recreation Department, and build the Community Services Department. Something that I have found very challenging, yet very rewarding. Which leads me to the final point on this page. I think one of the best, the best characteristics I bring to the position, should you choose to award it to me, is, you know, I'm, I feel like I do a very effective job at marshalling resources towards a goal. Whether it is trying to build a one-stop shop for a development process or tackling a project such as the development fees that we tackled in 2005, we took a comprehensive look at those fees, to building the Community Services Department. It is something that I feel like I'm pretty good at, and I would look forward to doing that on an organization-wide role. A city manager has to work in multiple environments. And I think that the conversation starts with the external environment. I believe that while it may be overused a bit, a stakeholder-based approach is appropriate. You gather perspectives from each of the stakeholders that are, that are in the room or in the community, as the case may be, and you do your best to set goals that are gonna meet a broad range of, a broad set of wider goals that each constituency is going to bring to you. And going into a process like that, you have to understand that success or effectiveness is a function of multiple stakeholder satisfaction. Otherwise said, you can't please all of the people all of the time, but you can quite often please a majority of the people and, and bring things to resolution or move things forward. I have been appearing in front of you and working with you for the last sixteen years, certainly starting in bringing projects forward, bringing capital projects forward, moving into development where, where I've done the most work in front of you, and into this, my current role as the Deputy City Manager for Community Services. My approach in working with elected officials is in viewing my job as here to inform you, to, to help bring you information, see that, that you are informed and educated, if you will, so that when you are making policy decisions, that you are making it with the best information you have, pluses, minus, pros, cons. And then my, my last point on this slide is a lesson that I learned actually working with the planning commission. Going back to about 2004, I started sitting up on the dais during the, during the planning commission meetings. I had seen that there was a growing disconnect between what we as the staff were saying to the planning commission and to the city council, a disconnect between what we were saying and what was being heard. And I thought it would be worthwhile to try the perspective from, from down there on what would be my right side, and found that that, that perspective is drastically different from sitting twenty-five feet over in, you know, one of those rows over there. And that was a huge lesson for me in, in working with appointed and then, you know, elected officials, is that perspective is reality. It really cemented that and brought it home for me. Allowed me to then take that perspective to the staff and say, hey, when I'm sitting there, I hear one thing, and when I'm sitting up on the dais, I hear it a little bit differently, and here's what I hear that's different. All in the name of going back to my second point, striving to inform and presenting you information so that you can make intelligent decisions. Any, any manager in a public or private organization certainly has to work within a complex internal environment. My approach is to do everything I can to establish a culture of performance and accountability. Do what you're saying you're going to do, and do it well. When you can't follow through on what you've committed to, own it as soon as you can and figure out a way to get as far as you can. That, that culture that I, you know, I first started to implement in community development and have since implemented in community services is rooted in transparency and predictability. And it has three basic elements. The first and the most important is the human element of the job. We need to provide people with the training and the tools to do their work. We need to help people plan for, for their future within the organization. And we also need to set ourselves up organizationally to have a group of trained or groomed individuals to step into positions at all levels within our city, so that when somebody does leave the organization, like, like Sean is doing here in, in April, that there are people behind him in the organization that have the qualifications to step into that. So I think, you know, what you're seeing here today is a, is a successful case for succession planning, something that's been very important to me in first in community development and then in community services. The second is, is an integration. It is very easy to fall into asylum mentality. I am a, I am a parks maintenance worker, I am a building inspector, I am a civil engineer who does facilities projects, and, and feel like there's not a whole lot in common that you have with your, with your other employees. But what I have found is that when you take, you take those silos off and you get people together, that you do find things like, that the building inspectors actually have a lot in common and a lot of shared interest with the planners, who are as interested in seeing a project come to successful completion as the building inspectors are. And that when you have a shared understanding of this is what the building inspector needs to do versus this is what the planner needs to do, you find common ground, and you end up with, with better projects. So I think that, that integration is, is, is a dynamic element with, within any organization. It's not something that you go through once and you build an integrated staff and you're done, and it, it goes off the stairs itself. Pardon me. It does require, you know, constant carrying beating. The same type of effort, I believe, is important with, with internal communication. I think that that is one of our keys, one of our foundational elements to improve customer service, is, is making sure that everybody is informed and does understand what their, what their role in whatever process that we're working on, whether it's a tentative map or a final map, or a special event, or a building permit, as to, as to how they fit in, what their role is, and what they can do in sharing information that's going to make everybody's role easier. In terms of, of the city, I believe that the city is largely headed in the right direction. We have gone from being essentially a bedroom community to a community where increasingly you can live, work, shop, and play. We're not there yet, but in the last fifteen years, I feel like we've made, we've made a good effort in, in getting the, the city headed in that direction. And it's because of the policies that's been, that have been set by the city council. Probably the most important part of that to me is the safety of the public. Now, I tend to view safety, I think, in a little bit broader term or definition than, than what I'm used to hearing in this room, or, and then we heard it today in the invocation, where, you know, the, the special prayers for our public safety professionals, the police and the fire. Not trying to take anything away from them, but I think there is more to public safety than police and fire. There is the driving to work, where you're using our roads, you're, you're going through our intersections, which have to be designed, engineered, maintained properly, so that you can get from home to work and vice versa during a flood. You know, we need to have effective infrastructure systems, flood control systems, sewer systems, park systems, so that, you know, during, a flood is just one example of an emergency. It could be, it could be an earthquake, it could be a, you know, a large-scale traffic accident. We need to have competent, well-designed infrastructure. And then certainly, for, you know, everybody that lives here, so that you do feel safe in your, in your home, in your bed, with your kids at school. We need to have activities for... We need to have activities for our children. This is, you know, a bit more of a long-term goal. We've, as we've cut our staff by a third since the start of the Great Recession, one of the areas that's been hit the hardest in the city has been parks and recreation. We see it in the condition in our parks. You know, we are struggling greatly to try and keep them in a workable condition and it's a battle that we're not winning yet. I don't think we're getting, I don't think we're losing anymore at this point in time, but we're not, we're not winning it yet. And, you know, hand in hand with that is a solid recreation program. So that our kids, and in particular, I think our teenagers, have things to do between the hours of when they get out of school and when mom and dad get home at night. You know, and looking at some recent statistics, that's, it's the middle of the week when the teenagers have had time on their hands and little to occupy it with, that we're keeping our police department fairly busy with that. And I think that's something that while we can't solve that whole problem on our own, as a city, we play an integral role there. Last point on this slide is how do you pay for all of it? And that's the balance of land uses that's going to get you there. It's property taxes and certainly sales taxes that pay those bills. Certainly we have more hard work ahead. We're still an organization that has a structural deficit built into our budget annually where our expenses are still exceeding our revenues. So we're still in a situation where we must change. We can't continue to do things because we've always done it that way. We can only afford to work on what is most important to our citizens. And we need a vision of a city, for our city, where we live within our means, we value our employees, and we zero in on those important city services. It's going to take us a long time to get there. If it were an easier job, we would have tackled it already. We've tackled a lot as a city and we've accomplished a lot as a city, but we're still not there yet. It's going to take years. But we really, at the end of the day, we don't have a choice. We must change. Finally, the big question of the day, why do I want the job? I bring a mission to work for public benefit. It's rooted in my engineering background, whether it's designing roadways and drainage structures to safely pass cars in rain, or whether it's, you know, designing a foundation for a two- or three-story building so that it doesn't fall down when you're full of people. That mission for public benefit has been refined in my years here at the City of Sparks through management experience, where my role became less about a specific design or construction provision to provide that safety, to making it the, you know, the best possible outcome for those who worked for me, to put them in a situation where they could succeed. And then lastly, it's been honed by the Great Recession. You know, we've been through four rounds of layoffs in the departments that I have been involved with. Each one has been, you know, more painful than the last. But one of the lessons that I have learned out of it is I would come, I would come through a round of layoffs and I would think, in particular after our second round of layoffs, and think, wow, we can't do this anymore. We don't have enough left to do the job that we were handed. And yet, what I would find in the people that I worked with is we would find a way. And each time we have gone through that and we have found a way, and then in the areas that we couldn't, one of those was code enforcement, there's an area where we largely failed for a few years. We ground our teeth and nestled up the courage to come back to the council and say, we're failing here. We have this resource and we have this demand for service and we simply can't do it. That's not easy work to do. We as a city are not done doing that. Frankly, we need to do more of that. But that's part of that honing that I'm speaking to by the Great Recession, because that is an important mission for the public benefit. You need to hear that from your staff when we are facing failure. I enjoy being a steward of the public's resources, not just their fiscal ones. You know, I enjoy, you know, working on the long-term planning, you know, down to single shopping centers where we're making a nice place to go within our city, you know, compared to planning for 50 years down the road, making sure that we've set aside adequate right-of-way. All towards, at the end of the day, it's a quality of life issue. It's something I want to be a continuing part of for the City of Sparks. With that, I think I've probably shot by my five minutes by a couple. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you have for me.
Questions for Mr. Krutz.
Mr. Smith.
You know, Neil, thanks for that presentation and I think we have two good candidates. And as a council member, I would not want to lose either one of you. So my question is, if you don't get the job, you're not offered the job, how will it affect your appointment here?
In the short term, it wouldn't. I would be greatly disappointed if I'm not selected. I would expect the same out of Mr. Driscoll. But I'm not in a situation where it's give me the job or I'm going to take my toys and go home. I am not there at all. I am interested in being in charge of my own organization. So I would continue to seek opportunities, ones that would ideally allow me to stay in northern Nevada, to run my own organization. But I'm not in a situation where if I don't get the job today, I quit. That's not going to happen.
And I'll just make a comment. I was going to ask you how your experiences have prepared you for the job, but I think you've covered that pretty well in your presentation, so thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Carrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, the mayor's got a tough job today. Both you guys are really well-qualified. I've worked with you both for a long time as the senior, I don't want to say the oldest guy up here, senior councilman, yeah.
I'll say it.
But I'm going to just ask one question of you, Neil, and that is, how many departments report to you?
Well, it's a single department, but it has many components.
Okay, how many divisions? What do you want to call them?
There are four functional areas and a dozen divisions inside those four functional areas that report to me.
You want to name them off or you just want to say it?
I can.
I just think for the record, it would be nice.
There is Inside Community Services Department is what we're talking about here. There is Utility Engineering, which has three components, sanitary sewer, flood control, and affluent reuse. There is the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, which is an advanced wastewater treatment plant treating just under 30 million gallons a day for Reno, Sparks, Portion, Washto County, and Sun Valley. There I sit as the Chair of the Joint Coordinating Committee. There is Traffic Engineering and Pavement Management Group that we have. We have redevelopment and economic development within the city. We have planning, both long-range or advanced and current, more project-based. We have infrastructure maintenance, which has sanitary sewers, storm drains, streets, traffic signals, parks, and affluent. We have the city's housing programs, geographic information systems for the city, lie within community services, capital projects, the Building and Safety Division, and then we have Department Administration.
Thank you.
Mr. Lawson.
Neil, I just have one question too. I'm going to first, I see someone in daily stepped in, so I'm glad he's here to hear this in person, is I don't like going through this process. I don't think this should be done in public and I'm totally against it. But with that being said, I'm going to ask you, what do you think the two most important things for the City of Sparks is right now?
Speaking to the, the most important thing for the City of Sparks right now, I believe, is the structural deficit that we have in our budget. It's something that we have, we have made great strides on, but we still have healthcare costs that we aren't in control of, that we're facing, you know, a 25% increase in this year's budget. And so that's something that we have to find a way. And I don't think there is a short-term solution, or we would have put it in place already, that gets us all the way there. But we have to find a way to work with the city's collective bargaining units to see that it is to everybody's mutual benefit in the long term to do a better job managing our healthcare plan and our expenditures. The second one is, we as a city or as a staff are pretty beat up. This Great Recession has been very hard on us and we do face, as a city, a pretty good morale problem. We did take a good step forward when, when the council, you know, returned the concessions to staff last fall. Just as much as anybody, I enjoyed the bump in my paycheck. And yes, I enjoyed the bump in morale and thank you very much for doing that. But that came at a price as well and is, you know, is also part of, you know, the hole that we're going to talk about tomorrow in the workshop, is that did add another, you know, in round numbers, $2 million in general fund expenditures that we hadn't planned on, and now we have to figure out a way to pay for. So to summarize, structural deficit in the budget and morale of city employees.
Mr. Ready.
I'll echo the comments that I've heard from other council members, that we have two strong candidates and happy to have such a difficult choice. I'd like to hear more about your vision for the city. I think that going into the Great Recession, we had a pretty strong vision and we had a direction that the city was headed. Prior to my time on the council, it was relatively clear in the community that the councils before me were working towards becoming more of a tourist destination, stepping away from that bedroom community and having a fully functional city where you didn't have to leave to live, work, play. But I don't think that what we've done is done a reset of that vision based on our current resources that would help us prioritize where we're putting our attention.
Okay.
And so I'd like to know a little bit more about your vision.
One of the, one of the lessons that we all learned in coming through the recession in terms of master planning is winding the clock back about a decade. We were very much interested in growing the future boundaries of the city. You know, we had looked north, northwest in Spanish Springs, we had set up the goalposts, if you will, in our sphere of influence, and gone up the west side of Pyramid and gone up the east side. And, you know, and looking at going several miles north and putting land in our sphere of influence. We had gone down the East Truckee River Canyon and put the land down there in our sphere of influence as well. Particularly in the East Truckee River Canyon, we initially went into it thinking that that's where we were going to see a lot of very good paying jobs, go down the East Truckee River Canyon. While I think the goal for good-paying jobs, more good-paying jobs in the City of Sparks is still valid, but it's more than valid, it is key to our future, we did learn that extending our spheres didn't necessarily make sense. And that came to fruition with the council when you, when you elected to de-annex, you know, the couple parcels of property that we had annexed out in the East Truckee River Canyon and remove it from our sphere of influence, because we saw that we simply couldn't provide municipal services, you know, out that far. We had reached, we had vision beyond our reach to practically apply the services in any kind of cost-effective manner. So we need to revisit that. But I do believe that it is, is good-paying jobs and job centers and jobs in business parks and in, you know, middle-to-higher-end manufacturing, you know, that pay good salaries and good wages are key to our future. We still have a lot of undeveloped land within our current city boundary. Do we need to look at adding more? Yes, we do. I don't think probably quite as far as we stretched a decade ago, conceptually. But that is the component that in the, you know, in the live-work-play idea, it's that work component that I believe we need to focus on the most. Inside of that, we need to make sure that we provide adequate infrastructure so that we can get people, to people and products to and from that.
Anyone else? Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Neil.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Mr. Driscoll.
Go ahead. Thank you. Sorry. Mayor Martini, members of the council, I'm Steve Driscoll, Assistant City Manager for the record. We're here today to consider my experiences and qualifications for working with you in leading the city into its next chapter as a result of Sean's announced retirement. I'm excited about the opportunity to share my thoughts on helping lead this organization and will take a short trip through my personal professional career and touch on some experiences and backgrounds that I'd like to highlight. I began my career with the City of Sparks in March of 1994 when I was hired as a budget analyst through the normal civil service process. Tested, interviewed, and I was eventually brought on board because I had brought several years of department head-level financial and administrative experience to the city with 16 years in the private sector, where I started out as a staff accountant in a CPA firm. I went on to be a senior budget manager, admin services, and strategic planner for a data center for a large national bank on the west coast. And then I was the Controller and Operations Manager for an international retail company that was in a startup mode and had great success in a very short period of time. Since joining the city in 1994, I was promoted to the position of Court Administrator in 1995 to assist in the installation of a new computer system that was aimed at improving court functions for the judges and processes for the clerks and improved customer service. Prior to my arrival, that system was determined to have fatal flaws in its functionality, and so the role that I brought was to help define and develop and implement an alternative internal solution. Late in 1999, when there became an opening for a new Administrative Services Director position, I applied as part of a national search and was ultimately selected to fulfill the role in January of 2000. Shortly after that, I was given the designation of Assistant City Manager, which expanded my responsibilities to now be citywide. My current duties include working closely with the manager, you, Mr. Mayor, and the council, in addition with the department heads, city staff, the regional governments, spend a lot of time with them, and our citizens in the daily operations and cities' functional departments. I'm also specifically have oversight for labor relations, human resources, emergency management, customer services function here in City Hall, as well as contract administration, risk management, and grants administration. And that's all done on a citywide basis. My experiences allowed me to be instrumental in the implementation of several city reorganizations since 2000 and in particular in 2009, doing the work that was necessary for the Sustainable Sparks Services Initiative, including the core services-based budgeting program that we're using now. I'm also active in the creation and maintenance of your strategic plan as well as doing performance measurement reporting. We're currently working on management efforts and citywide innovations improvements utilizing the four disciplines of execution, the methodology for project management for a complete review, city services, programs, technology, and the completion of goals and objectives for the city. My experiences in local government, private sector, which had expertise in technology, manufacturing, and retail, and external mentoring relationships I have in the outside world right now are designed to help me, help you complete goals and objectives. I'm a native Nevada and graduating from local area high school, the University of Nevada-Reno, with a degree in accounting. I also hold a master's in business administration from the University of Phoenix here in our northern Nevada campus. The International City County Managers Association recognizes me as a credentialed manager, and I also hold a certificate as a certified government finance manager as designated by the Association of Government Accountants. I've been active in numerous local and national associations, including serving as the past president of the Local Government Managers Association of Nevada, and I just most recently was a member of the 2013 ICMA Annual Conference Program Committee. My wife and I have chosen to live in the City of Sparks over the last 30 years and we've raised two sons in our community. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Driscoll. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate the presentation and I commend both of you because with, along with Councilman Lawson, I agree that this is a tough process. Nowhere else do you see it except in public life. But I'll ask you the same question I asked him. If you are not offered the position, will it affect your appointment with the city?
As Neil said, I would be greatly disappointed. For the last 20 years, I've dedicated myself to this organization and for the past 15 as the assistant, I've worked diligently to be prepared to step in at any time and have gotten up to speed on all the different organizational components. That loyalty and dedication would continue. There are a lot of things on our plate that need to be finished. I'm leading several of those on behalf of the city as I have done with shared services in the past in some of the largest projects. And there's some things that we need to do as an organization to drive forward. So at least initially, I would be dedicated to finishing those projects and then at that point, get an understanding from the council and how I'm doing and whether or not you still want me around. And if you do, I would continue to work for the organization, but I must admit that I would be greatly disappointed based on what I've done so far.
You know, and I'm a true believer of promoting from within. We have two qualified people here. These are the people that led us through the last seven years along with Sean. They got us through what we did. And so going on the outside, I think, is out of the question. And I think we, like I said, we've got two great people here that the mayor's got a tough decision today.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Mr. Carrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll say that again. Maybe it's a, the mayor has an easy job because, yes, there's two highly qualified people. Maybe that's the way, maybe that's the way to put it. How about that? But I'll ask you the same question that I asked Neil. How many departments report to you directly?
Technically, all of them.
Okay.
The city managers' organization in the manager's office now currently reports to both of us in a direct line. So all of the systems and all of the departments and all the funds come through me, whether directly on a day-to-day basis or on an ad-needed basis. Additionally, those departments... We need to be able to talk to our customers, which is really you, our management team, and most importantly, our citizens. And we need to be able to take our performance measures and to tell the story of what we're doing and why we're doing it and why it's important to them.
Mr. Rady.
And again, in the interest of being fair, same question. What's your vision for the city?
My vision's very similar to what the council has said in their strategic plan. We need to be the community of choice. And that needs to be the, from the top to the bottom. We need to be the place that people want to live and they need to live here, want to live here because it's a place where businesses want to be. We want to provide opportunities for recreation and for the live, work, play. And to be a place that people want to work, the choice of a place that wants to work, a place that has a diverse background all the way through everything we do. To be the choice on almost everything that they are, to where we could almost be a point where even though we're in a wonderful valley, that if I just wanted to stay inside our corporate boundaries, that I could do that. I could choose to stay here, choose to do the things I want, have the opportunities to be whatever it is that I want to be so that I have the proper medical, I have the proper retail, I have transportation systems that are the envy of the area. Because we choose as an organization to drive that forward, to be what's important to our customers, which is ultimately us.
Anyone else? Okay, now we go to closing remarks and then to keep it fair, I guess maybe we'll have Steve give your quick closing remarks, then we'll have Mr. Krutz also give some closing remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, Steve Driscoll for the record. It's been my pleasure to work for this organization for the last 20 years. It's, it's been a challenge and it's certainly been very gratifying in my business experience to be here and to see the things that we've done and where we're going and what we've gone through. I specifically went back to school several years ago to improve my toolbox, to help the organization to drive itself forward. My sense of loyalty and the compassion for what we do and to bring itself forward. I think that education opened up my eyes on several things. One, we have phenomenal staff. They've been through some tremendous pain because of the recession. You have a management team that has done an unbelievable job of continuing to provide services when there really aren't resources to do them. We've had the folks in the field that have found ways to, to keep their service delivery at a high possible level with minimum supplies and support and with, you know, a third less people around them to do the job. At the end of the day, we're a service organization. We are only as good as the people that we have working for us that do the jobs for our taxpayers and for ourselves. And so, it has been my pleasure to this point to serve you, to serve Sean and his team and to work with the staff that we have and to see their growth and to help them and to mentor and coach them wherever I can so that we can be the best organization for the future.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Mr. Krutz. Mayor Martini, members of the council, thank you very much for the opportunity to participate and be here today. It's been quite nerve-wracking in, in getting ready for this and in waiting for this date and time to come. But I am genuinely appreciative of the opportunity to sit here in front of you today and talk to you about my qualifications, my vision, answer some of your questions. I have enjoyed this and so thank you very much for allowing me that opportunity. I am a person who is assertive by nature. That's how I approach the world. I get a lot done with that. Sometimes I go backwards with that because I'm trying to go forward too fast with that. But that said, I, I am a person who, through my experience at the city of Sparks and with the different positions that I've held, have learned that, that while I may not be an expert in, in any given area, when I ask questions, I need to hear answers that make sense to me. And that if the answers don't make sense to me, there's probably a reason and I need to keep asking until they do. I am also a person who, who does hold himself and others around him accountable for pulling their share of the weight. And I don't hesitate to point out when I don't feel people are doing that. What I ask for you, from you today is the opportunity to bring that skill set, those particular skills, to you citywide and name me your, your next city manager. But again, thank you for your time. Thanks, Neil. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could, Chris just come on down. I want to explore a little bit for those in the audience and those on camera because things are mentioned a few times here and I want to make sure that this is, is covered and people know why we're talking about that. And that's the process. Chris, if you could just kind of give us, I'm not gonna ask you to quote chapter and verse of NRS to tell you why, why are we doing this in this format?
Actually, I would probably defer to legal counsel to talk about open meeting law because that's the appropriate venue, I believe.
Sure.
Well, the, the charter specifies that it is the mayor's appointment with council approval. The process that you've gone through today was requested by the mayor. The interview process actually was not required. The mayor could have come in and just made his recommendation. So, that, that's why the process is the way it is today. However, in order to interview, discuss, ask questions, it has to be done in public.
So, what, what portion of this process could have been done in private or anything at all?
Nothing could have been done in, you could not have taken any, you could not have deliberated in private.
What about individual interviews with any of the candidates?
Well, if, if, if the council member or the, if a council member had questions of the candidate in a one-on-one type situation where there's no deliberations required, I, there, I don't, there's no violation of open meeting law there. It's, it's when council meets as a whole and takes deliberations that, that you're, you want to make sure that's open to the public and transparent.
And, and a portion of the NRS that I'm interested in is the one that says that a city manager has to go through the public process.
My understanding is that is, it, it specifically does not address as a public process. The charter says the mayor makes his appointment with council ratification. Because the mayor wanted to give the council the opportunity to do an interview, then it was done in this way.
But there's also a chapter in NRS that covers all this. The process that has to be gone through for an appointed official.
There is the open meeting laws which require the deliberations. I, I, right now, I can think of a, a certain case law that requires that these type of deliberations be in public and that you cannot meet in private and hold interviews and, and deliberate in private.
Okay. And so, I just want to make sure very clear that if we had a, a meeting with either one of these candidates, one or both of them, that's not considered illegal.
No, sir. If you're, if you're holding interviews with them, you're not, you're not moving to deliberate. You weren't, it's, the, the meeting and the discussing is not, is not a violation of the open meeting law. It's, it's the deliberations and deliberations in, that then reach a decision.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Carrigan.
Yeah, I was just gonna bring up the fact that we can't, we cannot go in, in a, in a private meeting and talk about Sean's performance. That always has to be done in public.
Correct.
Right?
That's correct.
So, I was under the understanding that this also had to be in public.
Once you took the step to conduct the interviews, yes. If the mayor had made the decision.
If the mayor could have just said, okay, I'm gonna appoint so-and-so and that, we could have done that?
Correct.
Okay, well, I'll have to talk to him after that. This then.
Thanks, Mike. As to the, and the parking lot, yeah. As to the process, I didn't specifically think it was a good process either. But after, after having gone through this, I think it was a pretty good process. Everyone in the audience that showed up to see this, I think this is a very, very, very important appointment today that we're going to make if we do, to come to, to a decision today. I think it's very important. So, I think it's important for not only people that wanted to be here that are employees, but other people from the public that wanted to be here and those that are watching on TV. I think, you know, they're paying the salaries that we're talking about here, which are not cheap salaries. They're pretty good salaries. So, I thought at first that I didn't like the process. When we, when we hired Sean, we discussed everything behind closed doors. We came to a meeting. Tony made a recommendation. We all approved it, but we already knew what was gonna happen. So, I, I thought after I've gone through this, I think it's probably a pretty good process. Is it nerve-wracking, like Neil said? Absolutely. Is it difficult to do? Absolutely. But let me tell you something, folks. The job either one of these two people get today is gonna be very nerve-wracking and very tough to do and they're gonna be exposed to the public quite a bit more than they were today. So, after having thought about it, I just thought it was good for the council to be able to ask questions in public of what was on their mind. And that's why I decided to do the process rather than just come to the council meeting and make a recommendation. Having said that, I think the, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Is there a public comment?
No, that's on, you, you didn't want to comment on this, Chris. Skip, you want a public comment later? Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, having come to the end of this deal, I hope, you know, it, it is difficult to make a choice today. I, I don't think I can make a bad choice. Let me put it that way. Either one, I'm comfortable with. I'm just more comfortable of one than the other with, he has more experience, has done more things department-wise. I've been in the trenches with him more than the other. So, having said that, again, these, these guys are great employees, both, both my friends, which makes it more difficult. But having said that, I would like to recommend Steve Driscoll as our next manager. Mr. Smith.
Do we need a motion now to see if we approve that?
Yes.
Okay. I will make the motion to approve the mayor's pick as our next city manager.
Do you have a second? Ms. Rady.
A second.
It's been moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Rady to appoint Steve Driscoll as our next manager. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes four to one with Mr. Lawson, no. Okay. Steve, congratulations. Mr. Krutz, thank you very much. Sean, are we on a closed door?
No, sir.
Okay, next is comments from the public. Mr. Daley.
Skip Daley, business manager, Secretary of Treasure for the Laborers Union. That's the reason I'm here today. Wanted to just bring something to your attention you may or may not know of because it's taking place with the third party that you've hired to, to do a job. Essentially, the Laborers Union filed a complaint with the Labor Commissioner on the Galaxy Theater job. There was a determination, an objection, and then the Labor Commissioner referred that back for further investigation to the city, noting in his letter that please contact the workers involved in the project and the complaining party regarding the evidence that may have related to the allegations in the complaint filed December 16th, which was our original complaint. So, we went through there. RDC did send us a letter requesting to get some of the information that there was an affidavit on, et cetera. They cited a provision in NRS that said there had to be certain information. All of that information in the filing, the complaint process is contained in the complaint. We're supposed to get further evidence that wasn't in the complaint. We sent the letter off, requested them to, we said that we were ready, willing and able to have a meeting at our office at your convenience to assist you in your investigation, including providing the information discussed in your letter. We sent an email confirming that because we hadn't heard from them. So, when I get a letter today from RDC, which is your third-party affiliate, essentially, doesn't exactly say refuse, but they say they're not gonna meet with us. They say that they have to remain unbiased, which is why we requested 169 provide all specific documentation, and that they want to do everything in writing. And I'm sitting here going, how is the union, meeting with us personally, going to bias the situation? How is the, they sit, the thing where they said they want to make sure everything's clear and documented in writing, which is why we want to meet in person so that you don't misconstrue or misunderstand, so we can give extra explanation on what the documentation might be and have that. So, essentially, they're refusing to meet with us. We think that's arbitrary and capricious. We see no usefulness of it. I spoke to the earlier to the city manager about this issue, but I figured you were meeting today. I got the letter today. I'm gonna respond today.
they're paying the salaries that we're talking about here, which are not cheap salaries. They're pretty good salaries. So I thought at first that I didn't like the process. When we hired Sean, we discussed everything behind closed doors. We came to a meeting. Tony made a recommendation. We all approved it. But we already knew what was gonna happen. So I thought after I've gone through this, I think it's probably a pretty good process. Is it nerve-wracking, like Neil said? Absolutely. Is it difficult to do? Absolutely. But let me tell you something, folks. The job either one of these two people get today is going to be very nerve-wracking and very tough to do, and they're going to be exposed to the public quite a bit more than they were today. So after having thought about it, I just thought it was good for the council to be able to ask questions in public of what was on their mind. And that's why I decided to do the process, rather than just come to the council meeting and make a recommendation.
Let's hear it.
Having said that, I think that, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Is there a public comment?
No, that's, you didn't want to comment on this, Skip. You want a public comment later? Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
So having come to the end of this deal, I hope, you know, it is difficult to make a choice today. I don't think I can make a bad choice. Let me put it that way. Either one, I'm comfortable with. I'm just more comfortable of one than the other with, he has more experience, has done more things department-wise. I've been in the trenches with him more than the other. So having said that, again, these guys are great employees, both, both my friends, which makes it more difficult. But having said that, I would like to recommend Steve Driscoll as our next manager. Mr. Smith?
Do we need a motion now to see if we approve that?
Yes.
Okay. I will make the motion to approve the mayor's pick as our next city manager.
Do you have a second? Ms. Ratty?
A second.
It's been moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to appoint Steve Driscoll as our next manager. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes four to one with Mr. Lawson. No. Okay. Steve, congratulations. Mr. Krutz, thank you very much. Sean, are we on a closed door?
No, sir.
Okay, next is comments from the public. Mr. Daley.
Skip Daley, business manager, Secretary of Treasury for the Labor's Union. That's the reason I'm here today. Wanted to just bring something to your attention you may or may not know of, because it's taking place with the third party that you've hired to do a job. Essentially, the Labor's Union filed a complaint with the Labor Commissioner on the Galaxy Theater job. There was a determination, an objection, and then the Labor Commissioner referred that back for further investigation to the city, noting in his letter that please contact the workers involved in the project and the complaining party regarding the evidence that may have related to the allegations in the complaint filed December 16th, which was our original complaint. So we went through there. RDC did send us a letter requesting to get some of the information that there was an affidavit on, et cetera. They cited a provision in NRS that said there had to be certain information. All of that information in the filing the complaint process is contained in the complaint. We're supposed to get further evidence. That wasn't in the complaint. We sent the letter off, requested them to, said that we were ready, willing, and able to have a meeting at our office at your convenience to assist you in your investigation, including providing the information discussed in your letter. We sent an email confirming that, because we hadn't heard from them. So when I get a letter today from RDC, which is your third-party affiliate, essentially, doesn't exactly say refuse, but they say they're not gonna meet with us. They say that they have to remain unbiased, which is why we requested 169, provide all specific documentation, and that they want to do everything in writing. And I'm sitting here going, how is the union, meeting with us personally, going to bias the situation? How is the thing where they said they want to make sure everything's clear and documented in writing, which is why we want to meet in person, so that you don't misconstrue or misunderstand, so we can give extra explanation on what the documentation might be and have that. So essentially, they're refusing to meet with us. We think that's arbitrary and capricious. We see no usefulness of it. I spoke earlier to the city manager about this issue. But I figured you were meeting today. I got the letter today. I'm gonna respond today. But I figured I'd come down and make you guys aware that you're a third party, basically, in my view, not making the efforts necessary to conduct a full and complete investigation to get all the facts out. And that's my beef.
Okay. I've got a couple of questions, I think, Skip. Mr. Lawson? Happy to answer them.
This is a prevailing wage issue?
It's a complaint, yes, it's part prevailing wage and part 608, which is just general wage law, hour law in Nevada. The complaint was filed by the union under the matter of administrative code 607-200, which is a different process than the 338 process. And it's more efficient, if you ask me. The reason that we chose that is because then the city isn't out. The city doesn't have to expend any of their funds. We make an allegation, the respondent, in this case, Frasier Masonry, under NAC 607-210, is supposed to respond within 15 days, and they didn't. Labor Commissioner doesn't want them to, doesn't tell them they have to. We put in motions, enter default, and he doesn't do anything. In the meantime, we sent it out to the city to try to find out things that have already taken place. As I told the city manager, we go out, we monitor the job. We have to wait 30 to 40 days to get the certified payroll reports to compare it. If it's over two months, we have to wait another 30 days to get the, because it did split over June and July. So we have to wait a period of time. By then, the job was finished, which is why we chose to go the 607-200 route. Nevertheless, this is the way it's going. You guys get the letter from the Labor Commissioners. You do your best. And right now, they're saying, we'll participate, we'll provide you information, we're willing to meet with you, ready, willing, and able to come to our office and get that information. And the letter I got today is saying, nope, don't want to go.
So they're not providing you the certified payroll?
No, 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 that's not it at all. They want information from us. And we said, we're happy to talk to you and provide it to you. But they want to do it all in writing and don't want to come meet with us. Because they want to remain unbiased. I'm sure that they've had to go out and talk with management in person for Frasier. And I would presume that they're not requiring the workers on the job to only correspond in writing, that they would go out and interview those workers. So I don't see how meeting with the union is biases them. Unless they truly are biased, which you guys need to know, if they can't do their job, you should replace them.
Sure. Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Neil, did you hear something you wanted to say?
I have to, I have to.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Smith. Well, I just, you know, I think we're kind of confusing contracts here, because you're requesting, if I, correct, RDC works for us, correct? We pay the salary. You're requesting our contractor to come and meet with you. I think that's the wrong process. If they work for us, we tell them what to do. You send a letter to us and request a meeting. You don't, you don't go to our contractor and say, go have a meeting with these guys and work things on out. That's not the way. I don't think anybody would buy that story.
And again, I think you misunderstand the process. We filed the complaint with the Labor Commissioner. He sent it to the City of Sparks. City of Sparks did their original investigation, issued a determination, which may or may not have been the right form. We, oh, you asked, go ahead.
No, I'm waiting for you to finish.
Okay. They put in a determination, we objected to the determination, reserving our rights to say that this should be litigated under 607-200, and that the respondent should respond. So then, when the Labor Commissioner sends it back to the city for further investigation, you guys sent it to RDC. RDC, I don't know if they did the first investigation or not, because all I heard was from the city. They sent us a letter asking for certain information. They cited certain provisions in the law. We sent them a letter back that said, the provisions that you cited, all of that information, because that's the information you have to provide to file the complaint, is in the complaint. We're ready, willing, and able to give you the rest of the information that we have. And we're willing to meet with you, because you guys are asking us for information. Ready, willing, and able to meet with you at our office at your convenience. Whether they show up or not is up to them. Then we sent them back a letter that says, well, if all the information's contained in your complaint, then there's no reason to meet. And what I said to them is, all of the information required to file a complaint is in our complaint. There is additional information, and we're ready, willing, and able to give it to you. Come and meet with us.
My question is real simple, is that did you or your organization ever send a letter to our contractor and ask for a meeting?
Yes.
That's inappropriate. You don't, you own a construction business. You know, I wouldn't call one of my subcontractors on up and go to his supplier and say, will you meet with a supplier? And all that, all that correspondence goes through the City of Sparks. It's our contractor. We hired him. Nothing goes directly to them.
If I may, they sent me a letter saying that they were your representative. We responded to your representative, sir. So that is appropriate. For the record, Neil Krutz, Deputy City Manager for Community Services. I instructed RDC about two hours ago in an email to meet with Mr. Daley's organization. They have already responded. They will set a meeting up later this week.
Okay, good.
Perfect.
Great. Skip, thanks. Appreciate it. Thanks, Neil. Anyone else want a public comment? Comments from the city council, city manager? Okay, seeing no further business, we are adjourned.
I'll call the City of Sparks redevelopment agency meeting February 24th, 14th. Will the wrap-up please?
Chairman Smith?
Here.
Agency members, Ratty?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Carrigan?
I don't hear if you can hear me.
Schmidt?
Here.
Agency Attorney Iting?
Here.
And Agency Manager Carey?
Here.
Thank you. We have a call.
Okay, we know how to clear a room.
Okay, I'll open up to comments from the public. Anybody in public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the agency. Move the name of treaty. Consideration possible approval of minutes of the regular Sparks redevelopment agency meeting for January 27, 2014.
Move your approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
He doesn't get to play in the other.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
My screen just went down. There's one more issue that we have to do.
Claims and bills.
Okay.
Claims and bills.
Member four, report of claims and bills approved or payment and appropriation. Second? We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none?
All in.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, comments? Comments from the public? Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the agency. Comments from the agency and its members. Seeing none, we are adjourned.